Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority for Tuesday, September 3, 2024. Please stand and a video play the National Anthem and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Now is the time for our moment of solemn expression led tonight. We're grateful to have Pastor Matthew Hambrik from Costa Mesa First United Methodist Church. Pastor Hambrik, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Let's pray. The world began to be a little better than it was before. Starting today, help us who lead in this community to look at the needs of those who live here from your perspective, and may our community become a place where good things flow like water and fairness rolls like a stream. May your presence here be an inspiration so that we might see Costa Mesa and its people flourish like never before. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Hambrik. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Mr. Mayor, the record will reflect that all council is present.
Great. Madam City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reportable action was taken in closed session. Direction was given on the items on the agenda.
All right. Terrific. We don't have any presentations today, so that leads us in record time to public comments. Public comments are three minutes in duration. You get, you hear a sound at minute number two, and that gives you a warning to wrap it up within the next minute. At three minutes, your time will be cut off. You could talk about any, or the mic will be cut off. You could talk about anything except what's on the agenda. That includes items that are on the consent calendar. Three minutes, and if it's an English-to-Spanish translation, it's five minutes. So, once we're done with the chambers, we'll go to Zoom, and that's pretty much it. So, who wants to speak in public comment?
Hello. I'm a bit hard of hearing. Good evening. My name is Vicki Johnson, and I'm opposed to Costa Mesa joining the Orange County Power Authority. Your last meeting on July 16, Costa Mesa City Council meeting, Joe Mosca, the CEO of OCPA, presented. Councilmember Harlan asked Mosca, did the City of Orange withdraw from OCPA? Mosca says the City of Orange was never a member of OCPA. Now, Councilmember Harlan made a small error. He referred to the City of Orange instead of the County of Orange. Why didn't Mosca, CEO of OCPA, admit that it was the County of Orange that withdrew from the OCPA on December 20, 2022? It was a very substantial and consequential decision for the county to withdraw from the Orange County Power Authority. Mosca actually spoke at that meeting before the Board of Supervisors. And Katrina Foley, your former mayor, she was on the board and is on the Board of Supervisors, and she voted to withdraw from OCPA. One of her issues was a lack of trust. The County of Orange had to pay OCPA $1 million to withdraw, and they never even received any service. You could watch the board meeting and read a lot about the withdrawal from OCPA by the County of Orange in 1220, 2022. Now, I hope I've made this clear. Small, little error. Someone says City of Orange, but the CEO was not forthcoming. It was the County of Orange that withdrew. Now, can you trust when a CEO skirts around a consequential issue like this? You city council members represent the public. Mosca deprived you and the public of needed information. Is that it? Okay. Is that three?
You have another minute. You have another minute.
You, in my opinion, had you, the city council, heard the full story from Mosca about the withdrawal of different cities and the substantial risks that your general funds and the ratepayers would pay. I think you might have decided not to proceed so quickly with OCPA and grant permission for them to have your load data. I'm opposed to Costa Mesa joining the Orange County Power Authority. I recommend you wait until OCPA has an investor-grade rating. That's prudent. Don't partner with a business that shrinking has a very troubled business and whose CEO doesn't disclose information that you need to do your due diligence and protect your residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor. This is Roberto. I believe I had pictures that I had submitted today while I make my public comment. Great. Okay. I'll get started now. Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roberto. I'm the Leadership Development Director with Resilience Orange County. We've been organizing here in the city of Costa Mesa the last three years with the Latino community. Here, I've brought, some of the residents from Center Street and Placentia have come out today to advocate for improvements to an alleyway plumber street. For over a year, I've been coming to the city council, and we've also been meeting with Councilmember Chavez to improve the conditions on that alleyway. Here is a community meeting that we held with Councilmember Chavez on August 17, 2024, and this is in, right there off of Center Street. You can go on to the next picture. Here's a picture of the alleyway conditions that we have. As one of the residents today told me is that it looks like Tijuana, and so, like TJ. You can go on to the next slide. This is just another picture of the residents identifying the level of conditions here on this alleyway where, you know, residents are looking for change and improvement. Next slide. We also found various items that need to be thrown away. I'm hoping that our organization can partner with the city to host a dump day, a trash day outside of Center Street. It would be, you know, we've been building a lot of trust with the residents. This is one of the ways that we can partner with the city to clean up the street. Next slide. This is here with code enforcement in that same alleyway. There is a lot of smell that comes from those businesses that is literally right next door to a lot of the apartment buildings, and so, they have come out to share about their stories. Next slide. So, as I told you before, every city council meeting between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock, I go and stand outside of Center and Placentia Street. In July, I counted 16 people who crossed the street. In August, I counted 22. Just today, I counted 33 people who crossed that street today. I'm here to turn in 168 signatures that I gathered over since August 11 for this new crosswalk. I also want to talk about, as I've had before, if we can have Spanish YouTube. Some of the residents couldn't come out today. We have a few of the residents from Center Street that are tuning into our YouTube. It's only in English. The city of Santana has been able to figure out how to do a Spanish YouTube, you know, no subtitles. We actually want someone to be actively translating those meetings. If we can publish our agenda ahead of time and your support for Evictions, a legal defense fund that my colleague Christian will be talking about. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Humphrey?
Good evening, Council. Jay Humphrey, the vice president. I'm here tonight to offer a suggestion on increasing public active access and public participation with the council. And one of the things that seems to happen, and it's not, it just happens to do in most cases with timing and the circumstances that surround everything, but oftentimes, people will have questions about items on the agenda and what have you. Unfortunately, because of the way the meetings are run and the way they should be run, sometimes those questions never come up, never get handled, and the general public doesn't realize those questions exist. One of the things that happens is that people do send in mail, send in things, and ask questions about the agenda item. An example would be tonight's meeting on the Bear Street property where property had questions about what is going to happen, how it's going to be handled, which is germane to your handling of such a, of such a process. Unfortunately, nobody in the public is aware of those questions, nor will they probably get them answered tonight unless you guys take the time to answer those questions here tonight, but they won't get them. I would suggest that maybe somewhere along the line, you guys figure out a way to, as letters come in that have questions that are germane. I'm not talking about inane questions, but certainly germane questions that can help the public better understand what choices you're making, what things you're looking at, what they can offer as far as insight, because the question got asked in front of them in such a way that they understand what's going on better, and therefore can help you make better decisions. And that's a process that requires that maybe the letters come in and have their own special bin, if you will, where the, where those questions are specifically addressed either by staff at the meeting or by council at the meeting, depending on the kind of question what happens. And just note that these are questions from the public about this project, which would help the public be able to participate more fully across the board with our elected officials, our city staff. People are all working to help us to have a better community, to help us actually participate with them and help them make those choices better. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Christian Lopez, and I'm the new tenant rights organizer here with Resilience Orange County. I'm working with residents here in the city of Costa Mesa, and I just wanted to come here tonight to introduce myself, as I hope that we can continue to work together in supporting tenants here in the city of Costa Mesa. The current landscape with affordability of housing and the cost of living continues to put a strain on longtime residents that negatively impacts their quality of life, often leading to residents being pushed out. The work of Resilience OC is not to stand by and ignore the needs of tenants, but to support them and change the landscape of power in favor of tenants. Policies that support tenants should be emerging from here, the city of Costa Mesa, as it is a majority renter city with over 60% of people in the city being renters. According to a report published by United Way in 2023, Costa Mesa ranks fourth in eviction across all cities with over 250 evictions between 2020 and 2022. While the city has made progress in addressing tenant protections with the Tenant Protection Ordinance passed last fall, our organization continues to hear and see the need for more protections on the ground. One of the ways the city can support tenants is by renewing the contract for legal services for tenants facing eviction. This program has been successful in reaching those most in need, as we have referred tenants to this program in the past. And as you consider upcoming budget conversations, consider funding this program for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I want to first talk about a renewal notice that I got in the mail about a permit parking program. I'm paying for services that I don't get. This last month, I counted 21 days without proactive enforcement, nights and weekends. If you call into the police department and ask for enforcement, they're going to ask you to give the license plate of the car in question. And then, if you further the conversation, they'll tell you that they don't have the resources to do this. Now, I understand that housing is an issue, but we have millions of dollars that we can give for rental assistance, but we can't provide service that the residences pay for. Second, I want to, I want to talk about Center Street and a crosswalk. I live one block over on Town Street. You don't need a crosswalk on Center Street, you know? It's not that far from 19th Street, and the Central Avenue is not that busy where it's a dangerous street to cross. I think that the city council's already done enough damage to 19th Street and Placentia that you're going to absolutely compound that area. And, you know, you don't think you can make it worse, but you guys will find a way. Finally, I want to, I want to talk about the character of this council. I've been, I've been looking into just kind of how we got where we are with Measure K, the permit parking program, West 19th Street, the pot shop ordinance, and they all have a common theme. And the common theme is you guys advanced this agenda during COVID. So, while we were trying to make sense of an upside-down world, you guys took this as an opportunity to push an agenda forward that was going to be insanely unpopular. I guarantee that if you would have done this permit parking program when people could come into the, or, and were out of the fog of COVID, you guys would have been run out of town. Same with the pot shop ordinance. It's, it's really, it's really sad that we had people on the dais who took advantage of this. And it wasn't like it was ignorance. It's actually infuriating that, I mean, I was, I was a school teacher at the time. I saw what students were going through firsthand. I saw what parents were going through firsthand, and this council took it upon themselves to advance extremely unpopular, what do you call it, your extremely unpopular agenda on the city. I guarantee you, you wouldn't be able to pull that off nowadays. So, again, I've, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, this council is worse than the Regheimer-Mensinger majority. You will have done more damage when it's all said and done to this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Buenas tardes. Yo les bendiga. Mi nombre es Juana Trejo, y soy promotora de salud del condado de Orange.
Good evening. Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
No.
Good evening, and God bless you all. My name is Juana Trejo, and I'm a promotora, a health promotora in the Orange County.
Estoy aquí en esta noche, este, apoyando al distrito número cuatro por las peticiones que tienen de la mejora del callejón y del cruce peatonal. Porque creo que, que como distritos, aunque no formemos parte del mismo, tenemos el deber de, de, de apoyarnos.
And I'm here tonight to support, I'm part of District Four. I'm here to support the request for improvements in the alleyway as well as the crosswalk, because I do believe that even if we're not part of the same district, we have a duty to support one another.
Pero también vengo a agradecerles por los eventos que han tenido con la policía, por ejemplo, el de Night Out el mes pasado, a las ferias de salud donde ustedes, algunos de ustedes se han hecho presentes, porque tenemos buenos testimonios de las personas de cómo se sienten valorados por ustedes, y también creemos que el que la policía tenga estos eventos con la gente va a ayudar a que juntos podamos tener un Costa Mesa mejor, que podamos tener una mejor relación, que ya la gente no les tenga miedo, que los vea como agentes que están para cuidar su seguridad y no para detenerlos.
I also wanted to thank you all for all the events that you've held with the police, the Night Out, as well as the health fairs that you had and you were also present in. And I think it's a, we've had good testament and good testimony regarding people who've been there, and they feel really valued by you. And we do believe that having these police events with people will help create a better Costa Mesa, as well as improve the relationship, and it will help people not feel scared of the police anymore and see them as officers who are there for their security instead of to detain them.
Sabemos también que en el pasado hubo un, un programa que se llamaba GRIPE, que era de prevención de drogas y pandillas. No sé si hoy todavía lo tengan en algunas escuelas, pero tenemos algunos padres muy preocupados. Pero yo quisiera preguntarles si la policía está dando estos, estos programas, porque incluye la educación para los niños, para los maestros, y también para los padres de familia, ¿verdad? Y nosotros no vamos a dejar la responsabilidad solamente en ustedes. También los padres de familia, los niños y los maestros tenemos parte de cómo saber educar, porque se supone que debemos de curar, de cuidar el futuro de nuestros niños, ¿verdad? Porque creo que no nos gustaría tener más jóvenes que están perdiendo su vida por estar metidos en pandillas ni porque estén metidos en drogas. Entonces, ojalá que en el futuro pudiéramos tener programas para los jóvenes, que en lugar de verlos como, como un cáncer, como un problema, los damos como seres humanos. Y yo creo que unidos podemos hacer la diferencia.
Hello. So... I also know that in the past, we used to have a program that was called GRIPE, and it was for drug prevention as well as gang prevention, and I want to know if that is still around. We have a lot of parents who are very worried, and if the police is having those programs here, I know that they educate kids, teachers, as well as parents, and we don't want to leave the responsibility just up to you. We know that parents, kids, and teachers are also part of this and knowing how to educate our children. And I just think we need to be looking out for the future of our kids, because we don't want any more youth who are losing their lives due to drug or gangs. So, just thinking about future programs for kids, and instead of looking them like a cancer or an illness, let's work together. I think if we work together, we can create a difference.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Juana de la Paz. Yo he estado aquí antes. Yo llevo, soy residente de la center, exactamente donde está horrible el callejón. Tengo, tengo 27 años viviendo ahí, en esa calle, en ese callejón, y jamás han ido a echar, aunque sea un pedazo de cemento. Está horrible. Ya, mis hijos crecieron, pero ahora ya vienen mis nietos.
Hi, good evening. My name is Juana de la Paz, and I've been here before, and I'm one of the residents that lives near that horrible alleyway. I've been living there for 27 years at that street, that alleyway. They've never fixed, not even a small part of the cement there. Now, my kids have grown up, but I do have grandkids coming in.
Y pues también por el, el peatón que estamos pidiendo en la center hace poco hubo un accidente, porque a veces los carros van a tan alta velocidad que se fueron a estrellar hasta en unos apartamentos. O sea, sí lo necesitamos.
And I'm also here to request the crosswalk at Center. There was an accident not too long away, because you know that car speed up a lot, they end up crashing into the apartments, and I'm just here to tell you that we do need it.
Y pues otro que yo sí me gustaría que la policía se cediera más unas vueltecitas por la calle Center y el callejón, porque sí he estado viendo muchos jóvenes vestidos de negro, con mascarillas, o sea, como queriéndose ya hacer pandillas en, en esa área. Gracias.
And I would also like for the police to come around and patrol around Center and the alleyway, because there has been a lot more youth who have been wearing black, and they've been wearing masks, and it's looking like they're trying to form some gangs or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos los concejales. Estoy aquí. Hemos recorrido el callejón con nuestro concejal. Gracias por escucharnos. Gracias por esa atención que nos ha dado. Él se ha dado cuenta que realmente la situación está muy fea, y le agradeceríamos mucho a todos ustedes que nos ayuden con ese nuevo callejón. Queremos un nuevo callejón y también un pase peatonal en la Placentia y la Center. Muchísimas gracias. Que nuestras voces sean escuchadas. Gracias.
Good evening, all. I'm also here regarding the alleyway. And actually, the, we did take a tour with the councilmembers, so thank you for doing that. We feel really heard, and we feel like you are paying mind to us. I think you've been able to see how bad the situation is there, so thank you all for your help, and we would like a new alleyway there as well as a new crosswalk, please, at Placentia and Center. And we just want our voices to be heard. Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Marta Castro, y yo llevo viviendo 33 años en la Center. Ya, mis hijos están mayores, pero el callejón solamente se ha reparado dos veces en 33 años, pero nunca se ha puesto cemento. El cemento es muy importante ahí, porque hay muchos camiones de, que llegan a las tiendas para llevar las mercancías, y es demasiado la basura que se tira ahí. Entonces, muchísimas gracias por hacernos este encapie de que queremos nosotros el, el callejón que se vuelva a pavimentar, y también el cruce peatonal que se ocupa, porque ha habido muchos, muchos accidentes en ese cruce, en ese parte que se ocupa. Entonces, muchísimas gracias a todos, y esperemos que se resuelva pronto. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marta Castro, and I've been living here at Center for 33 years. My kids are older now, but in those 33 years, that alleyway has only been repaired twice, and it's never been paved. There's been no cement laid on it, and it's really important that it is, because there's a lot of trucks that go there to deliver merchandise to the stores, and there's just too much trash that gets dumped there. So, thank you so much for making this a highlight. We do want a new alley, and it does need to be repaved. We also need a crosswalk, because there's a lot of accidents that are happening there at that crossing. So, thank you all, and we hope that this resolves soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Matilde Pérez. Estoy aquí para venir, que sean escuchadas nuestras voces, para pedir la ayuda de ustedes, que si nos pueden ayudar con el nuevo callejón, porque está bien feo, bien destrozado. Tengo 24 años viviendo ahí en la Center, y necesitamos que si nos ayudan a como arreglar el callejón, y pedimos un cruce peatón, porque siempre ha habido accidentes, y se han ido siempre accidentar en el edificio del Pacific. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Hi, good evening. My name is Matilde Pérez, and I'm here asking for our voices to be heard and asking for you all to help us with getting a new alley. It's pretty bad and pretty rundown. I've been there for 24 years at Center, and we need help fixing that alley. And we're also asking for a crosswalk, because there's always accidents, accidents happening, running into the building at Pacific, so thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Coral Klipan, y como han dicho todas mis compañeras, estoy aquí también para hacer el soporte a ellas acerca del callejón y del cruce peatonal. Les agradecemos por escucharnos y esperamos pronto una resolución. Buenas noches.
Good evening. My name is Coral Kliplan, and I am here to echo what all my colleagues have already said. I'm here to support them and requesting a new alleyway as well as a crosswalk, and thank you, and we're hoping that this resolves soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes a cada uno de ustedes. Mi nombre es Siri Zúñiga. Soy... Muy buenas tardes a cada uno de ustedes. Mi nombre es Iris Uniga. Soy vecina de esta comunidad por 24 años, y estoy apoyando al Distrito IV con la premisa que tienen, que ustedes ya pudieron ver ese callejón, que es una amenaza. Para una de las compañeras tuvo un accidente una de sus niñas, y a este momento no se ha recuperado porque puso el pie mal y se lastimó muy feo. Y por otro lado, pedir porque se pueda hacer ese callejón para prevenir más accidentes y que no se sigan perdiendo vidas. Gracias. Muy amable.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Iris Uniga, and I have been a resident here in the community for 24 years. I'm here to support District IV with the premise that you've already heard about, the alleyway. It's also a threat to people. There was a colleague of mine whose daughter had an accident. She's still not well. She stepped wrong and got really hurt. So just asking for a new alleyway to prevent more accidents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos. También estoy por lo mismo que todas mis compañeras, pidiendo porque se cumpla y mejora el nuevo callejón, y pongan el cruce peatonal. Y también que le he dicho a nuestro alcalde que si nos puede poner como signs para que no haya tanta popó de perros en las calles, porque cuando llevamos a los niños en la escuela hay mucha popó de perros en las calles. Gracias.
Good afternoon. I am also here to echo everything everyone has already said, and requesting that the new alleyway does get done, as well as the crosswalk. And I'm also here to ask the mayor if he can put up more signs regarding dog poop. There's a lot of it when we're going over to drop off our kids at school. There's just a lot of it on the streets. So if we can get some signs for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I need five minutes.
Oh, yeah, you're not entitled to five minutes. Hold on, we'll give you three.
Okay, we're good now. Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I'm Christian Redmond's father, Lynn Redmond. And on the screen, this is a handout received at the last Fairview Park Steering Committee. I'm talking about Fairview Park, by the way. On the lower right map, there's a gray area to the right of that lower right corner in that map that's called a community-based rehab area, or something like that. Right where the line on the border slices that map, there is an extension that goes out to the walkway, a concrete walkway and fence. And basically, most of that that's cut off, and maybe a little bit more to the left, is Christian's Eagle Scout sage group project. And the project was a redo of, I think, two other attempts to do similar things, to plant coastal sage and other native plants to rehabilitate the area. I think it started back in the 1990s. And it was very well done. There were landscape architects. Lynn Capoya, under the auspices of Moffett and Nichols, was the landscape architect. And I think there was a big, maybe more than one federal and state grants to fund these projects. There were irrigation pipes put in, and of course, money to buy the plants and install the plants and all. Well, for one reason or another, over time, those projects failed, and that area was left with just a bare patch of adobe with no plants at all. And Christian, this is a view right now of Christian's area. If you look north, at the top of the picture there is a laurel. Anyway, I can't remember the right name for it, but that's the northern end of his project. And just from that tree down to the left and right in from this recycle sign is his southern border. If you can see the next picture, well, that's just another view looking north at the same tree. And the north end of his line, okay, this is the city area adjacent to his, just on the south line. You can see it's totally infested with mustard. And that's what we're after right now, is to get the city to do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comments. First up from District III is Councilmember Andrea Marr.
Yeah, just a thank you to everyone who came to speak tonight. I know that alley is not in my district, but one of the things that we often are faced are folks tripping and falling on sidewalks that belong to the city, and that obligation, that legal obligation results with us. And from what I've seen, many of the trip and fall hazards that come to us, that folks have filed claims against the city are far, far less severe than some of the conditions we've seen in some of our alleyways. So I recognize that some of it is up to a private developer and some of it is public. But the very least we can do is make sure that the public rights of way are maintained to the standard we would expect everywhere else in the city as well. So I'm looking forward to following up with staff on that. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it short tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds from District Five.
Great, thank you. I agree with everything that Councilmember Marr said on that. And I know we have in our current budgets and plans to be more proactive in our sidewalk conditions as well, to prevent some of those trips that we're seeing. I did want to thank everyone who spoke and the team at Resilience SE. Really appreciate the work you're doing, helping sort of bridge the gap on awareness and how to engage with local government. I know we're working to meet you where you are, too, and I'm happy to see, you know, meetings out in the community, because we're definitely trying to do that. I support the recommendation shared about trying to provide translated YouTube, so folks who can't be here in person can still hear what we're talking about, getting agenda items in advance to provide more opportunity to prepare, and more opportunity to get questions answered. I know it's always a mad scramble for us, too, to try to get through the reports and get our questions answered. So I appreciate the recommendations you're bringing to the table and all of the work you're doing to help engage our broader community. I know a lot of the comments raised are related to challenges that the majority of residents in our community are facing, those who are renting and facing waves of evictions and rising rents. We're certainly doing a lot of work on that, but I'm definitely anxious about some of the funds that we've been leveraging to support our renter community disappearing. So I'm hopeful that we continue to grow our relationships with folks who are helping us really keep our finger on the pulse of what's happening for our renters, and encourage all of you to keep bringing us ideas, help us understand what's happening, and ways that we can provide that support. We certainly need to be keeping that top of mind. On the, I've been unfortunately taking my dog to the vet quite a bit the last few weeks, and my vet is actually right there on Placencia and Center, so I've been paying special attention to that area as well. Lots of people of all ages crossing. I support the need for some traffic calming in that area, so thank you for the work there. I know staff is already looking into some potential design solutions. And I just wanted to share also then a few upcoming events that may be of interest. So tomorrow is the Wednesday at the Senior Center, the Community Workshop for the Fairview Park Master Plan. My understanding is this is the only community workshop, and it requires in-person attendance. So I had expressed earlier, and I really do hope we can find a solution to at least video the staff or consultant presentation for that meeting, so we can post that and make that available for folks who cannot be at the meeting in person, in the spirit of transparency and access and inclusion. A few weeks after that, on September 21st, I'm working on an event with Councilmember Marr and SoCal Edison to address what we've been hearing a lot in the news. And I know Assemblywoman is working on really big challenges with energy bills. I've actually been stunned to hear some of the data on how fast energy bills are rising. There's a lot of financial assistance programs that are available and undersubscribed that many Costa Mesa residents may be eligible for. So these are opportunities to get discounted rates on your electricity or gas bills. There's also energy efficiency programs where there's low or no cost opportunities to reduce your energy consumption altogether, which would lower your bills. So we're working on an event for September 21st to get more information out about those programs. And I'll send those to staff as well. I think it'd be really helpful if we can share some of those financial assistance programs through our city channels to help residents who may be struggling with their bills. The following week, on September 28th, a couple of events I'm really looking forward to, our annual Hispanic Heritage Month event, Celebration at the Senior Lawn. This is a fun celebratory event. I know we'll have some really good music and food. And that afternoon, I'm partnering with the Costa Mesa Historical Society on a community bike ride to explore Costa Mesa's history. So that'll be a fun bike ride. Bikes and e-bikes, welcome. And then lastly, I've been noticing that once upon a time, at the end of our agendas, we actually had a list of community events. And I'm wondering if we could bring that back, because that would save some of the time of providing the details for all these events. So again, once upon a time, we had a list of events for the upcoming month, and I'd love to see that back in our agenda, because I think that was a really helpful reference. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up from District Four is Councilmember Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Bien breve. Todos hoy, gracias por venir. Los escuchamos y estamos haciendo proceso con todo lo que ustedes quieren. Real briefly, I want to just thank our residents for coming out today and speaking on behalf of their community needs. I had the pleasure, as shown before, of attending a committee meeting with them in August, where we actually toured the alleyway that's shared with the City of Costa Mesa and with the businesses at About 19th Street. I showed residents the update city staff had for me, which is we've already contacted the businesses to make sure that they are proactive, looking at solutions for this alleyway. As we await their response, my only hope and request from the City of Costa Mesa is that we are also proactive in enforcing any violations on the alleyway. It did smell really bad. I'm not even sure if they're properly disposing of waste in the alleyway. And one thing to me that's really concerning is when they do slurry seal the alleyway, to make sure they're not ruining the grade of the water runoff, because there's a lot of puddles that seem to permeate the issues of the cracking in the sidewalk. Again, I reiterate, I support the crosswalk on Placencia and Center Street. I don't think, I've been one time I've been to that community without seeing someone jaywalking in the street. And as we know, folks will jaywalk when there's no other convenient option. So that, to me, tells me that there's community support with those incentives collected, colloquially the support. And overall, I think investing as part of town is always is critical. Real briefly, I also want to thank one of the speakers for highlighting the importance of collaborating with public safety in our Hispanic communities. The speaker's 100% right. We want to work with our law enforcement partners and make sure that we are working hand in hand to keep our community safe. In my eyes, public safety really is two-pronged approach. One prong is making sure our team are fully funded and staffed, but the other prong is prevention. What are we doing to keep teams occupied, kids occupied? What positive community impacts can we have through nonprofits, church groups, et cetera? So I look forward to working with anybody on public safety, maybe on the front end or the back end. But more importantly, thank you again for coming today and speaking on these important issues. We hear you and we're working on it.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up from District Two is Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items I do want to talk about. The first one I want to address, being available to the constituents, in particular, any questions that you may have. If anybody in this community wants to reach out to me, I'm available anytime. My phone number is 949-524-0085. Call me, text me, whatever. I don't care. You can reach out anytime. Or if you don't want to do that, you can reach out to Constituent Services. They'll be happy to put you in contact with me. I'll walk with you. I'll talk with you. I'll do whatever you want to handle whatever needs to be handled. Any questions you have, bring them my way. I'd be glad to help. As far as this alley goes, I keep hearing different things about it. And Councilmember Chavez brought up the fact that there was an option of slurry seal. I guess this might be a question for Rajah. Is this alleyway slurry sealable, or is there too much damage? Are we beyond the scope of slurry sealing this alleyway? Because I haven't seen it, so I'm not sure. But I know extensively what slurry seal is and does.
Mr. Mayor, if I can answer that. Councilmember Gamaros, yeah, it is, actually, it's a private alley, and the alley is damaged significantly, so it's not something that you can slurry seal. It has to be repaved. You have to grind and repaint it.
Okay, so slurry seal is not an option. It's private property, and we'll have to, okay, thank you. That's all. We'll talk about that more later, I guess. The other thing I want to say on another note, it's going to be hot this weekend. There's going to be heat wave coming. I know that on a county level, I don't think we're going to meet the requirements for cooling centers, but the City of Costa Mesa is going to offer them as well to the community. So if you don't have air conditioning and you don't have the ability to cool yourself down, the Costa Mesa Senior Center will be one option, the Donald Duncan Library will be your second option, and the Mesa Verde Library as well will be your third. And if you can't find those, come to my house. I have a garden hose. I'll be glad to help keep you cool. One of the things in particular, I will say, if you, on a serious note, if you don't have the ability to get to a cooling station or whatever, a wet towel wrapped around your neck, over your head, on your shoulders, is a huge help and will bring you down real quick if you're feeling any symptoms of heat exhaustion. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Those are great tips. I'm coming over to do slip and slide. You got a slip and slide over there? All right, that's for the people growing up in the 70s. Okay, so Councilmember Harper from District One.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for those that came out and spoke tonight. In some previous meetings, councilmembers spoke about two Costa Maces, and I think they're inferring that there's some that are more fortunate and less fortunate. And I certainly may say it a different way than two Costa Maces. I appreciate the gap that sometimes gets created in society. I know we vote for certain government programs to help the needy and the less fortunate. I'm not necessarily a big fan of those, but I am a strong supporter of local charities. And tonight I want to spotlight three local Costa Mesa charities that do a lot for the less fortunate. And in keeping in the spirit of why I ran for office, I'm going to donate my four-year compensation to those charities. And if you don't mind, I'd like to talk about those three charities. The first we came and spoke to us a while back, it was Working Wardrobes. They're headquartered in Santa Ana with a location here in Costa Mesa. They serve over 5,000 people each year to help provide them the skills and confidence to secure employment. Since 1990, they've transformed over 125,000 lives. They focus on low-income individuals from marginalized groups, including veterans, senior citizens, young adults, people of color, and those that have faced homelessness, substance abuse, domestic abuse, or simply long-term unemployment. Working Wardrobes offers personalized services, coaching, resume support, mock interviews, training programs, and job placement assistance. It's the kind of charity I love and we all love. It gives people a foot up and makes them, you know, productive members of our community. The second one is the Orange Coast Christian Learning Centers. This was a vision of Tom Pollitt, which many of you knew, who passed away a year ago. He was an active member in our community and served on our Costa Mesa Finance Committee. He wanted to provide support for families who chose homeschooling options but needed additional academic support and a physical facility to connect with others. He used to say, "I want it to be the cost of a cup of coffee." Today, using volunteers and donations, the tuition for that school is $1,600 a year. The learning center emphasizes academic excellence in English, math, and arts, along with moral development and the integration of faith, ensuring that children thrive in both knowledge and character. They participate here in Costa Mesa with the Harbor Light Church and a church in Garden Grove, started in 2021 with just 14 students. They now have 70 students, and next year I think they'll have double that amount of students. I think it's great support for parents that, sometimes working families that need their children to go somewhere but want to homeschool. children to go somewhere but want to homeschool. The third one is soccer. Sorry, this is a little near and dear to me. It's the Slammers organization, which was founded in 1984 by Walid and Ziad Corey, both graduates of Costa Mesa High School. Both immigrants from Lebanon, who came here at 16 years old because of the bombings that were occurring in Lebanon. They have a great story. Walid is a long-term, over 20 years here as a resident in Costa Mesa. And they wanted to create a soccer club rooted in character integrity and personal growth. Today, the Slammers have over 850 players currently, in ages five through eight, 18, across various teams. 95% of the teams are girls, by the way. In 2002, they won their first national championship title, and since then, they've accumulated 21 national championships and three world championships. In the past 20 years, they have more national championship titles than any other club in the nation. It's a great story. Every year in Orange County, they attract, they have a showcase for the Slammers, and they attract 50 coaches from across the country. They don't have those showcases in Costa Mesa because they can't get field, so this is a shameless plug to keep working on that, and I've tried. They established a Share the Dream Scholarship Fund for those that are less fortunate, and over the last 10 years, they've provided over $1 million in assistance to let, you know, just because a child can't afford it, they can play for what's one of the top clubs in the nation. They've got countless kids that are in there, or kids, women that are in the professional ranks now, and many played on the national team, the U.S. national team. So four years of council compensation is $165,000. Each of these charities will receive $50,000 for a total of $150,000, and that leaves $15,000 in the most respectful way and encouraging way. The other $15,000 I'd like to offer as a match to my fellow council members. For example, if they want to make a contribution to a charity, if they pick it, I'll match it dollar for dollar up to $15,000. I hope doing this publicly, you know, encourages people to support those charities, demonstrates a commitment to helping those that are less fortunate. And thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Jeffrey Harland from District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Costa Mesa. Hope everybody enjoyed Labor Day. And I just want to take another moment to acknowledge all of our workers who make our city work and our community. And in particular, I did want to acknowledge that our city staff does a tremendous amount of work to keep things going here. We play a small part as council, but we can't do anything without their dedication and commitment. So I do want to thank everybody and hope they were able to enjoy that holiday. Last week, I just wanted to report I attended, with some of our public work staff, a meeting hosted by the County of Orange to talk about bike lane improvements over in the unincorporated area near, in the east side, University Avenue and Mesa and Santa Ana. This is a fairly long-term project, we're looking at probably the next two to three years, but city staff will certainly be coordinating with the county to see if we can accelerate some of those efforts. And then lastly, just wanted to make an announcement that this weekend, the Kaiser Woodland PFO is hosting their, I think it's Second Annual Pickleball Social. I believe all the tickets to play have been sold out, but if you want to watch people play pickleball and enjoy dinner afterwards, check out their website. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody who spoke. Regarding the situation with that alley, yeah, I do think, and I've been communicating about that with Director Seth Araman, it is a private alley, but we can work on it with code enforcement and working with those. I'm really proud that, over the course of approximately 10 years through many different councils, we've worked on taking our alleys and improving them, our public alleys, and we're almost done. And we don't put slurry on them, we improve them with concrete. If you drive around and you see the alleys in Costa Mesa, you'll see that almost every one of them have been done, and it's a really good job that the public works have done, and that the council has supported for all these years, no matter what. And so it's like disappointing when we have an alley that's private, and it stands out, it sticks out. It's like when you carpet your living room and your dining room looks terrible. So we should focus on that. And then one of the speakers made a good suggestion to do a dump day on Center Street, and it got me to thinking, a few months ago, I went to, it was kind of a dump day and a collection day over in District 3. It was near Sonora School, and it was put on by Love Costa Mesa and the Labors of Love Group. And so it made me think about what are they doing? And thanks for mentioning those nonprofits that you support, Councilmember Harper. One of them that I support is Love Costa Mesa, and they're doing an event this coming Saturday in District 2 from 8:30 to noon, and they're helping somebody who's elderly that needs help because they've got code enforcement issues. So if you go to lovecostamesa.org, you can find out more about it, and I would encourage people to check it out. And even if you can only spend an hour or an hour and a half, go over there and help the folks at Love Costa Mesa. We do have GRIP in the school, we have GRIP in the school. It does remind me that we had a few meetings, one meeting we had with West Side residents, it was a group of people that were concerned about some of the incidents that have occurred on the West Side. And Councilmember Chavez was there, Councilmember Reynolds, Councilmember Gamaros, a great group from our police department, Ashley Anderson from the school district was there, talking about what we're doing to address those issues on the West Side. And then there are also similar issues having to do with gangs in District 3 and District 2. And then we have a follow-up meeting with the Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember, again, Reynolds, and the PD team. And it's really quite extraordinary, the work that they're doing and the knowledge that they have and the things that they're putting in place and working and collaborating with the school district. With GRIP, with Project Kinship, with different programs that they're doing with the school district, I was very impressed, impressed by what they're doing. We do, they do understand, and we understand, that this is a serious issue. It's being taken seriously by serious people, including the people up here on council and our city management, that and especially the police department, and our colleagues over at the school district. So I came away feeling good about the work that we're doing, knowing that we need to do more work, knowing that none of that activity is acceptable, but knowing that we're on it, which is what the chief says a lot of times when I text him, "I'm on it." The other thing that happened in another area is we kicked off the street medicine program that we're doing with CalOptima. And it's, there's only three cities in the County of Orange that do street medicine. It's quite an extraordinary program. I'm very grateful for the support of the council and the support of the staff for this program. Now, what we're going to do is, again, meet people where they are and provide them the coverage and the services and the health care that they need to improve their lives and to get off the streets and into permanent housing. And I've been told by city staff that in the first week, we made 80 contacts and enrolled 20 people into insurance through CalOptima. So it's already showing progress, and it's just going to keep showing progress. So I'm really proud of what the city's done there with the support of this council. So, and dog poop, I agree, I've got no tolerance for dog poop, so let's get some more poop bags out there and everything like that. The last thing I'll say is this, is the Festival of Children, on kind of a happier note, the Festival of Children is starting tomorrow, is the kickoff, and that's always a fun event. It's Sandy Sagerstrom is the person who has spearheaded that for years. And so just look for the different, go to Festival of Children, look for all the events that they're having around Costa Mesa. We're very lucky and fortunate to have that event in our town. So thank you to Sandy and to everybody who supports Festival of Children. City manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. All of my comments were covered by you this evening, so thank you.
Oh, wow. Okay, good. Then, city attorney, Hall Barlow, you have a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing this evening.
Okay, good. All right, now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar, we decided in one motion, unless any of the items have been pulled by either the public staff or the council. In terms of recusals, Councilmember Gamaros has recused from the warrants, consent calendar number three, because of his wife works for Priceless Pets. I'm recused from that item, the warrants, because of contributions to my campaign by Where Disposal and Everett Dory. I'm also recused from number eight because of Where Disposal provided contributions to my campaign. So with that, has any items been pulled, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. CC 6 has been pulled by a member of the public.
Okay. Then let's get a motion on the balance noting the recusals. Councilmember Marr, and seconded by Councilmember Chavez, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
Excellent. So then we have a consent calendar item number six. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Yes, this is the biannual review of the city's conflict of interest code.
Oh, okay. And a member of the public has pulled that, so let's just open it up for public comment. Hold on one second. Jay, I gotta get your mic up. There you go.
Good evening again. I, the guy who pulled item six, it's a nice step to have a biannual conflict of interest acknowledgement, but it needs also something that we've been asking for for a long time, and that's an ethics policy. They are complementary, they move together, and I'm asking you guys, once again, to develop an ethics policy that processes right along with the review of conflict of interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other public, anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comments, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Chavez is moving the item, seconded by Councilmember Marr. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, great. So we don't have any public hearing items. The first item of business that on our agenda is old business, one old business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Thank you. This is second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa, California, approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement, DA 9401, between the City of Costa Mesa and the Interinsurance Exchange of the Automobile Club. Presentation by Mr. Aldana, Assistant Planner.
Okay. Now, before, you did a wonderful job, and before you start, I just want to remind you that this was a 7-0 vote before, and so, you know, you've got it in the bag. So just brevity is appreciated.
I'm Christopher Aldana, Assistant Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. The Auto Club is requesting an amendment to their DA adopted by city council in 1994. Unless extended, the DA will expire on October 31st, 2024. To date, AAA has completed Phase 1 improvements, which total 235,825 square feet of the 500,000 square feet expansion. The 1994 entitlements include a 500,000 square foot expansion that was planned to occur in two phases. Each phase was to consist of an approximate 250,000 square foot building. Additionally, a four-level 1,840 square foot, oh, sorry, 1,840 space parking structure is approved on the adjacent 9.7 acre parcel. To date, AAA has completed Phase 1 improvements, which total 235,825 square feet of the 500,000 square foot expansion. Additionally, the 9.7 acre parcel to the west, which has a driveway along Susan Street, has been improved and is utilized as a surface parking lot for AAA employees. The remaining Phase 2 improvements are shown in yellow shading. On August 6th, it was recommended at the city council meeting that the city council approve the proposed development agreement amendments and ordinance adoption, and to find that the final environmental impact report, 1045, is still valid pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15162, this project remains within the scope of the June 20, 1994 certified final environmental impact report for the AAA expansion project. The effects of the project were examined in the 1994 FEIR, and all feasible mitigation measures and alternatives developed in the 1994 FEIR are incorporated into this project, and no new mitigation measures are required. Therefore, the 1994 FEIR for the AAA expansion project is determined to be adequate to serve as the environmental documentation for this project. No further environmental review is required, and all the requirements of the CEQA are Staff recommends that the city council uphold the August 6, 2024 first reading vote and approve the development agreement extension and allow a 20-year time extension that would expire October 31st of 2044. Amend the provisions pertaining to the rate and methodology for calculating traffic impact fees, amend provisions related to the setback of a future parking structure, and find that the final environmental impact report is still valid and that no further environmental review is required. This concludes staff presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
I appreciate it. All right. I don't see any questions. Let's open it up for public comment. No public comment in the chambers, closed public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Councilmember Chavez.
Move to approve staff recommendation.
Seconded by Harper. All right. Unless you have anything to say, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
Great. Okay. Next one is our first, our first new business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
General Plan Amendment Screening for a Proposed Residential Development on a 6.125 acre site located at 3150 Bear Street. Presentation by Mr. Jaeger, Associate Planner.
Mr. Jaeger, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and council. Tonight, I have the screening for the housing project at 3150 Bear. The first step in this process for any privately initiated general plan amendment, it is a screening before city council decide if the project should proceed and to provide any early feedback to the project design. Tonight's screening does include providing feedback on amending the land use designation from the site from general commercial to high-density residential. The proposed project includes demolishing the existing TVN development and to construct 146 for-sale dwelling units, including 20 detached units and 126 townhome units. Should the project proceed, it will require various entitlements, including the general plan amendment, a zone change to high-density residential, density bonus agreement, tentative track map to allow for the condominium units, design review, and any reviews required by The project site is composed of an approximately six-acre site to the east of Bear Street, just south of 405 Freeway. It has a current general plan land use designation of general commercial, and it is zone administrative professional. These designations do not support residential use of the property, but instead allow for office and service uses. The site, yes, sir?
Yeah, our screen's on our thing is not working. It shows up on that monitor. Yeah, it's all right. Yeah, I'm having, I'm having the same problem.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Do you do have hard copies?
Do you do have hard copies of the presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So I'm on Page Five right now. Turning to Page Six. So the site, it is visible from Bear Street and the 405 Freeway. The images on the screen kind of show the streetscape visible. And the surrounding neighborhood, it does include single-family neighborhoods to the east and south. The neighborhood to the east, it does feature primarily single-story, single-family homes, as shown in the image on the top right. The lifestyles neighborhood, it is to the south, and it does feature two-story homes, so it's on the right middle image on the screen. The project site's also in close proximity to South Coast Plaza, Metro Point, Crystal Court. As you can see, the mall on the bottom left. Shiffer Park is directly across Bear Street in the two middle images, and then the image on the right on the bottom is a office building directly to the south of the site as well. So now on Slide Eight. The slide, it is in close proximity to a variety of other services which will be used by residential uses. The designated elementary school would be Pollerino Elementary School with current districts. It's less than one mile walking or biking distance. In addition, the closest cafe is Starbucks Coffee at Metro Point, which is approximately half a mile, and it's about a 10-minute walk, four-minute bike. Shiffer Park directly across the street, and then Mitsawa is the closest market. However, being a specialty market, I also included the Bonds, which is about a mile away. State of Brothers on Fairview is also about a little over a mile away. So the existing site, it does feature the iconic TVN building and a variety of hardscape landscaping. The perimeters on the east, west, and south have dense vegetation, which is proposed to be kept. In the event that the vegetation cannot be kept to help screen the project from the neighborhoods, new screening vegetation would be planted. So the project site, vehicular access is provided generally in the same location as the current site off of Bear Street. Secondary emergency access will be continued to be provided on Olympic Avenue. Sidewalks are proposed throughout the project, connecting the units to Bear Street, and internal private streets, they're generally on a grid pattern with additional pedestrian connections throughout. In total, the project would include 372 parking spaces, with each unit containing a two-car garage, with the remainder of the parking spaces being open parking throughout the property. There's two configurations for detached floor plans. Plan D1 is a three-bedroom plan, and Plan D2 is a four-bedroom plan. All of these single-family dwellings are located along the south and the east of the project site, adjacent to the existing residential neighborhoods. There's four detached, or excuse me, four attached unit types, with units S1 and S2 located on the first and second floor, the first floor being the garage and an entry, the second floor being the living area. Units S3 and S4, they're proposed with their living spaces on the third and fourth floor, again with the garage and entry on the first floor. The project does propose to include modern craftsmanship elements with various articulations as prescribed in the design guidelines. Privacy and shade studies will be required should the project move forward. The project does propose approximately 46,000 square feet of shared open space, including an active recreation area, including shade structure, barbecue, play equipment, and casual seating area. In addition, a passive recreational area is proposed on the western portion of the property. Each unit is also proposed to have its own private open space. The detached single-family units will have their private rear yards, which are approximately 600 square feet, and each townhome unit is provided with at least one balcony on the upper levels. In addition, the project, it would be required to pay parkland impact fees, should it move forward. So the site, it's not listed as a housing opportunity site. However, the site, the applicant is proposing to include 5% very low-income deed-restricted units, so eight units, and the applicant is also requesting concessions and waivers to development standards. The inclusion of the 5% affordable units would result in a 20% density bonus, which would allow for a density of up to 24 dwelling units per acre. As allowed by the California Density Bonus Law, the application may request up to one concession and unlimited waivers, and a concession is a reduction in the site development standard or modification of the zoning code, which results in identifiable and actual cost reductions. The application is requesting a concession to the maximum height provisions to allow for a maximum height of up to 52 feet and four stories. The application is requesting a waiver as well to provide reduced open space, as proposed. It's approximately 27% of the lot, and a waiver is a reduction of a development standard that physically precludes the construction of the project. In addition, the applicant is requesting a parking reduction pursuant to the state density bonus law, which, if requested, the city is obligated to provide. As mentioned, 372 parking spaces are provided. The state density bonus would require 228 parking spaces. The municipal code would require 477. So they are providing more than the density bonus requirement. The project is potentially to provide off-site improvements. City staff is working with the applicant to finalize the improvements, but they could include things such as improvements to Shiffer Park, pedestrian access through Olympic Avenue to provide access to Bear Street and Shiffer Park for that existing neighborhood, and new signaled intersection and circulation improvements on Bear Street. City staff will continue to work with the applicants to finalize these public benefits. There are various general plan policies that apply to the project, including encouraging the development of owner-occupied housing, limiting building heights to four stories south of the 405 Freeway, requiring that new developments pay their fair share of impact fees, and to consider the impact of new housing on existing residential neighborhoods. So the next steps tonight, City Council should discuss the project, provide any feedback to the developer concerning if the project should move forward or not, and if it is to move forward, offer early input on the project design and features. If authorized to proceed, staff will work with the applicant to get a complete application submitted. Once the applications are reviewed, the planning commission will take action on the density bonus, design review, and tentative parcel map. They will also make recommendations to the planning commission, or to the City Council for the general plan amendment and the rezone. After that, the council will take the lead on the rezone and the general plan amendment. That's it for my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant team is also here.
All right. Well, before we throw it up for questions, is there anything affirmative the applicant team wants to say, or is it, are you just here to answer questions? All right. Then let's hear the affirmative first.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Johanna Crocker. I'm with Meritage Homes. First, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to start by introducing myself, as well as our company, Meritage Homes. We are the fifth-largest home builder in the country. At least, we were last year. I don't know where we'll fall in the rankings this year. We're always kind of, you know, playing and jockeying for that position with other builders, but we have been in business for 38 years, and we've built over 175,000 homes, so we're very experienced. We are publicly traded, so we're very well-funded. We operate in 21 markets across the United States, so we have a lot of experience in the homebuilding industry, and our focus, our operational focus, is on bringing market-rate quick-move-in homes that are specifically designed for first-time homebuyers. So we're very excited to be in Costa Mesa. We've wanted to be in this jurisdiction for a very long time. Obviously, there's a need in the community for this type of housing, so we're committed to hopefully bringing that to you, assuming that's what you guys allow us to do. So thank you for that opportunity to come before you. I also wanted to thank staff for the presentation. We've been working really closely with them. They've been, they've been tough, but I think we're making ground here to make this the best project possible for the, for the city. As was mentioned, we're bringing some, some great public benefits that we're continuing to work through with staff, and we're doing what we can to meet those, we're working with them to make sure we're meeting all of the development requirements and complying with the standards set forth for the project. I did want to point out that the current general plan designation does allow for residential uses as a complementary use to the commercial aspect, so this general plan amendment would actually be consistent with the densities that are allowed per that residential density. What we're proposing is to just remove the commercial requirement. That density is required to provide a PUD normally under that scenario, so I just want to point out that there was residential at one point in some form or fashion contemplated at the densities that we're proposing for this particular property from a land use perspective. Obviously, how that design plays out will be part of what we're working through with staff to make sure that we're being sensitive to the neighborhood and we fit within the context of the residential, single-family homes around us. I also wanted to just let you guys know that we're planning on two community meetings. We haven't set those dates yet, but we're really excited to be working with the community to figure out kind of what, refine those public benefits that were just briefly mentioned in staff's presentation, and I'm just going to leave it at that. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything that you might want to discuss.
So I don't think it's required, because we're not really voting on anything, but just out of an abundance of caution, why don't we go through the council and see if anybody has anything to disclose in terms of ex-party communication? I'll start. I met with Meritage, like, probably six months ago, and it was a very different project when we met, but we did have that meeting. Anybody else? No?
I've had communications with the developer and the owner.
Right. Well, we were in that meeting together, so there was that one. All right, good stuff. We did that. Now, any, any other, what's that? No, there's, I only went to one. Gamaros was there. And then so was the developer.
That was it?
Yeah, and staff. Yeah. Okay. So with that, let's see. Any questions? You have your light on. Do you want to go?
Yes, sure. You made a point of mentioning this is first-time homebuyers. What specifically about the design or the layout or anything else makes this appropriate for first-time homebuyers?
Sure. So, now, I wish I had my slide, but that's okay. We specialize in what you might have heard of referred to as missing-middle housing, and really what that is, is kind of bridging the gap between what, an apartment and a traditional, single-family home. So in areas that are, where land is very expensive, the way to help get that cost down is to bring up the density of those homes, so you can spread the cost of the land, as well as the improvements to that land, across a greater number of units, and that helps to bring the pricing, prices down. So that's kind of what we specialize in. So the density is part of that, but, you know, there's more to it than obviously just density and making the project pencil. I mean, we don't have a project if it doesn't pencil. It's also being respectful of the neighborhood that you're in and trying to balance that density and not going, you know, we don't want a, you know, 10-story apartment building, which in today's world actually is allowed if it's an affordable project, which, that's not something that we want to do. We want to be sensitive to the neighbors. We want to be taking into consideration those interfaces, which I think you can see in the site plan. Part of that is related, you know, we're next to a bunch of single-family homes, so we intentionally lined that edge with detached homes to be respectful, so it's more of a like-for-like complementary use immediately adjacent to those existing residents. And then we're using those backyards as a buffer and an opportunity to create, save the ficus trees that are there along the southerly border, which provide really great screening. We have to make sure that the arborist is, you know, that works with the arborist recommendations, but that's why we put backyards there, to help with that interface a little bit. And then, along the easterly edge, we're trying to preserve the trees that are there. It's not a consistent screening, though, so we're going to fill that. Our plan is to fill that in with additional hedges and trees and so forth to provide some privacy to those neighbors' backyards. And then the four-story is really where that missing-middle part comes in. We did a limited fourth story. It's more of a pop-up, not, not a full fourth story, and that allows us to get the bedroom counts a little bit more in line with what the market's demanding. If you only go to that third story, you're limited to kind of a two-bedroom, just based on the fire egress. If we go to that fourth story, we're able to get a third bedroom on that upper floor, and that's really what that fourth-story pop-up is. We kept it limited for the massing and with in mind shade, shadow, and, you know, the neighbors as well, just to be consistent as we could be with the neighborhood and be respectful of their privacy.
And then, can you please explain the mechanics of how the eight very-low-income for-
I'm sorry, can you-
Can you explain the mechanics of how the eight very-low-income-for-sale properties would work?
Sure. So typically, missing-middle housing is market-rate housing, but in this case, we have, we do have a handful of deed-restricted homes, and we'll be working with the city on how that will get implemented. We've done it in other jurisdictions. We're working on one in Anaheim right now. We've done it in Huntington Beach, and it's, it's a, it's a process where you have to qualify, you have income qualification set by the state for, to be able to qualify to buy those homes, and there's a whole process behind that. If you want me to get into the details of it, I can, but it might bore you.
No, I just don't know how much of it we've done in this city before, so I know there will be questions around that.
Sure, sure. And that's something we can, we have an actual, we have a consultant who can speak to it better than I could, who will help with the implementation of that program and making sure that those homes remain deed-restricted in perpetuity. It'll be on the deed as well, and then also for qualifying those candidates for, for those homes.
Got it. And then, last question for me.
Sure.
Can you just, like, walk me through your parking math? It sounds like we, you're providing more than you're technically required to, but given the nature of the site-
Sure.
-you need to park it, so-
Yes, which is why we didn't just go with the minimum requirement.
Right.
In our experience, usually about half a space per unit, which is what we're providing, somewhere between a quarter and half a space is usually sufficient to accommodate the parking for our projects. We do notify our tenants, you know, that, we make sure they're aware of the parking. We do put garage, windows in our garage doors to go by and make sure that people are actually using their garages for parking and not storing a bunch of junk in there, and the HOA does enforce that to make sure that there's adequate parking for the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Harper?
So I need a 12th-grade education, so bear with me.
Okay.
So deed-restricted properties, I qualify for the property, I buy it, I default on the loan. How does that work, then? How do I, I want to sell my property. Do I have to find another qualifying person to buy the property from me?
The, the bank would probably be the one to do that, but yes, yeah, it would be a deed-restricted property, and whoever, if they haven't paid their loan, the bank would take that, and they would have to find somebody who would then qualify to-
What about in the case that I'm paying off my loan, I just want to sell the property? How does that work?
It would be the same process. Yes, you would have to find somebody who qualifies.
You go through a program, someone has to qualify, and so it just limits the market, doesn't it?
Correct. Yeah.
Where do you put the affordable units at?
We spread them throughout the community. So we haven't located them specifically yet, but that'll be part of the package that comes before you, when you make your final decision on the project, entitlement decision on the project, the package that comes before you will have identified those units.
And they're just random, or you're not-
It's kind of random, yeah.
Because it doesn't matter to you, does it, as a builder?
No, not really.
It makes no difference.
No, not really.
Yeah. And, okay, parking, I'm a little confused on the parking.
Sure.
And I'm real, I understand density bonuses and what, why you take your standards and just lower them.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of problems does that create? I mean, it says there should be-
Sure.
477, but you go to, let's see, 372. It's not too bad.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And that's based on what exactly? How do you get to the 372?
That, that's just our experience in our communities. Over the years, we've, we've built a lot of communities in California and around, in areas, in cities similar to this, similar in size with the same parking issues.
So you would say Costa Mesa's just wrong in there, and I'm not saying they're not.
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean-
Somebody's wrong.
I will, I will say that you have a higher standard than most jurisdictions, but I'm not going to say you're wrong. I mean-
I like wrong, but it's okay. I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm really teasing, but I'm- I like wrong, but it's okay. I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm really teasing, but I'm quite, I'm somewhat serious if it's changed.
Yes.
If it's changed.
Well, and I think you'll find, and not related to our project, but in general, the state of California is pushing cities to reduce parking just from, as part of the, you know, climate.
Oh, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. And I'm in favor of gas stations in your development, so you're wrong, you're the wrong guy. Talk to them.
Yeah, so we're always trying to find the balance, and, you know, there's other jurisdictions where I actually have to fight to provide parking, so.
So, open space, and this is maybe a question for staff. You knew this was coming, didn't you? Open space, are we keeping, this project will be less than our standard that we want to achieve for open space? Or, and I'm going to speak, and speak to parks, too. How does this impact parks as far as acreage per, per people, per population? Can you guys speak to that maybe?
Sure. So, the, the open space proposed is approximately 27%. The code requires 40%. So, it is approximately 13% less of the lot.
That I knew.
The, all residential developments, they are either required to dedicate parkland or pay parkland impact fees. So, the parkland impact fees would be assessed on this project. So, each unit is applied a certain number, and that money goes into the city's funds for parks, and it can be used.
Okay. So, what's our acreage per thousand people of, there's some stat is like 4.6 acres per thousand or something. Do you know those numbers? I just feel like we're going backwards on the parks, and you're going to, but you'll pay fees, and then we'll hopefully do something with those fees.
Can I?
Buy my house. Somebody want to help me with that?
Those would be restricted funds for that purpose only.
Yeah.
And as part of our public benefit, one of the things we are exploring is actually some improvements to Shippensburg Park immediately across the street.
Right.
That would not just benefit our project, but the rest of the community as well, so.
But it's still a little park, right? It wouldn't be a bigger park, right?
Well, I feel like it's the quality of the park, not necessarily the quantity, but, you know, that's not my decision to make, obviously, but that's-
Not here.
... my opinion. I feel that if you're, you can, you can do a lot based on the amenities that you provide. Whether we like it or not, this is a kind of an urban environment, and I think, you know, one of the amenities we're offering, that the site offers, I shouldn't say we're offering because it's already there, offers us a lot of walkability to a lot of, to South Coast Plaza, some of the great, you know, arts facilities that you have in this community. So, you know, I think that's why people will want to live here, is they're able to walk to a lot of those spaces, at least as a young, well, I'm not young anymore, but when I was young and a first-time homebuyer, those were things that I looked for when I was purchasing a home, was the ability to walk to all these amenities, not just the parks, but also things to do.
I see. I'd still kind of looking at our standard for open park space, and money doesn't get you that done. It doesn't. And the quality of, you know, if the park will fit 100 people or 200, you probably want 200 and wander around a bit if it's bigger. So, it's just-
Don't disagree.
That's why, it's hard for me to get my head wrapped around the density bonus thing because it kind of just throws your standards out the window and says build some homes and-
Sure.
-give up some things. It's hard to measure that, so.
And the number of acres per thousand persons identified in the municipal code is 4.26.
4.26. I remembered sort of. I got it backwards. I did it 4.26. So, with this, does it go, it goes down, right?
Correct.
It'll go down. Do we know how much it'll go down? Probably miniscule.
I would, I would have to get back to you.
Where are we at right now? Do you know? These are, Arliss Reynolds knows the answers to all these questions. I know she does.
It's either 70 or 90. I think it's 70 acres short.
70, we're 70 acres short?
Pretty wide.
There you go. Forgive me. I'm asking the wrong-
Is it 70 or 90?
I'm sorry. I wanted to make that point. I know you would anyway, but I'm going to make it. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Are we going to do a development agreement regarding this site, and some of these issues would be addressed in that? And if, if we're not going to do that, what is the reason why we wouldn't do a development agreement on this site?
The applicant has not proposed a development agreement to this point.
Is that the way it works? Is the applicant, because I mean, we've got some pretty significant, you know, plan amendments and various things. Is that something that the city could request?
It's, development agreements, they're typically used to allow for development in flexible and strategic ways. So, I can't give a great answer at this point based on where the project is at. However, if the applicant did decide to move forward with that, that would give them flexibility and additional value in the project, and we could also work on obtaining additional value for the city.
Is that something the applicant would be interested in discussing?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I think that that would be-
If that's what's needed, we are certainly open to having those discussions.
Yeah. I think that that would be, that would be something to consider. I mean, you know, the development agreement doesn't mean anything, and all that matters is what's the content of the development agreement. And so, all right, Council, sorry, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first, let me say thank you for coming to us with the residential housing project. I've been very pleased with the fact that we actually have a proposal in front of us, and ownership, as you've probably heard from a number of people, is very important, so.
Yes, the young folks that live in Costa Mesa in our office are very excited about the opportunity for some homeownership opportunities, so.
So, my questions relate first to the site plan and then to architecture, and maybe talking about your younger professionals in your office is a good launching off point. I'm looking at this as, you know, a potential buyer, looking at the site plan, and is there any way we can bring up, maybe from your presentation? Sure, we can start there. So, you enter off Bear. You come in, it's kind of an awkward little eighth of in a curve, and then you drive about 70 feet, and then you have what appears to be looking to your left or straight ahead, a very long alley. So, am I reading that correctly? It's just-
Yes, that's an alley to access the garages. Your front doors would be taking access off the open space.
Right.
On the front.
And about, how long is that alley? I mean, I see the width is about between 26 and 32 feet, but.
I don't know that number off the top of my head. Sorry.
Okay. So, just as thinking as a prospective buyer, that's the first kind of visual I see, and it's a not very appealing visual, and you actually don't even get to see the front facade. But if you are looking from the street, straight to the, to the end, I would say, to your, I guess, the east side there, you do have a straight view of a single-family residence. You get some, some idea.
Correct.
And I appreciate the buffer on the perimeter using the single-family residential. I think that does accommodate some concerns that the neighbors are going to have. But however, it does kind of literally box you in as to what you can do with, with the remaining portion of the, of the site. So, I'm wondering, from the perspective of a buyer, what is their, what kind of experience are you expecting them to have to market this? In other words, you're, you're trying to sell these homes.
Sure.
What are the first things that somebody is going to gravitate towards?
I think first-time homebuyers are looking for price, honestly. I mean, that's, that's the first thing they're looking for, and then they're also looking for the ability to have, you know, enough bedrooms for the people in their household, whether it's, you know, a single person or a family. That, to me, is the first thing that people look for, and then the rest of that all comes into play. And I, before I came to this meeting, I did a quick little Google search on homes under $1 million for sale in Costa Mesa. There's eight of them.
Yeah. So, what would be the entry level price, then?
Right now, our pricing is consistent with what's out there in the market, so right around that same number.
Okay.
But, you know, three years from now, when these are built and for sale, I can't guarantee that's going to be the price, obviously, but that's in today's dollars. That's what we're looking at.
Right. But the stacked flats, which are integrated, right?
Correct.
Everybody has a first-floor entry.
Yes.
Some have to walk up to the third floor for the continuation.
That's correct.
Others are just the first and second.
Correct.
So.
But they all have direct access to their garage, which I think is a selling point for a lot of people. So, they don't have to walk outside their unit to get in their garage. They can park in their garage and walk up the stairs from their garage. It's an interior door.
Right.
So, I think that's a big selling point. Once you're upstairs, then the rest of your living is there. So, that first, the second level, they live all on that same level. So, once they're upstairs in their home, they don't have to climb any more stairs. And the unit that's above that, same thing. The only time that they have to climb up that second set of stairs would be to get to that third bedroom.
Okay. So, this is a very different product than we've seen. Admittedly, we haven't seen a ton of housing anyway in the last eight years.
Sure.
So, how is that, is that just appealing to the demographic that you're looking at? I mean, are people willing to?
I think, yes. I think, again, the selling point is the price.
Okay.
And in order to afford a, get into the market, you're not going to have, this is a first-time homebuyer. This isn't the home they're going to grow, they're going to, you know, have grandkids in. This is getting into the market, building some equity, and moving up to the next, the next house after that.
Okay. Let's just jump to architecture real quickly.
Sure.
I think what is a little bit challenging in the kind of mass that you've identified here, these look like 18 units basically in one stacked building, is trying to read each individual unit.
Okay.
And so, obviously, it's not a clear, you know, vertical delineation. As you mentioned, you know, if you look at one door, it basically is a ground floor and then a second story, and then you've got another door, but you really don't have your, rest of your unit until you jump up a couple floors. So, I think that may be, at least from my perspective, it's hard to read what the, what the individual units are.
Sure.
And I don't know if you're married to a particular aesthetic, but this, this seems to be kind of a pastiche of a number of different materials and articulations. It is kind of a bit jumbled. I guess my question, though, is to what extent, if any, did your team look at our design guidelines? And I'm not saying looking at them is a good thing. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, we did. We did consult the design guidelines, and we feel we're in keeping with them. I can't get into the details of that right now because I don't have my architect here, but, because this was just a general plan screening, but I'm happy to bring them forward when we get to the final hearing to discuss that, or if you want to meet, you know, with our architect at some point, we can certainly have that conversation.
I mean, I understand this is very preliminary. I just want to give you some kind of general ideas about, at least where I'm thinking, and maybe you have some different ideas based on the demographic and who, who plans on purchasing this. Jumping down, though, to the single-family residences, just by comparison.
Yes.
The one on the left is a much more harmonious design. The one on the right seems very flat, and it's kind of mixing different geometries there. That window in the middle with the kind of fake window seems to throw things off a little bit. So, my preference is to kind of stick with some, some simple geometries and some basic articulation. I think the one on the left is a much better option.
Okay.
And then obviously, you've got some trees in here.
Excuse me for a second. You seem to be like making comments about the thing.
Yeah.
Why don't we go to public comment, and then we can all kind of do that? Because we haven't gone to public comment.
Sure, no.
Right. So, if we could talk about, just like questions now?
Okay.
And then hold like your comments about the articulations and so forth until we've gone to public comment.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? Yes. Or do you have any more, do you have questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Yeah, can you talk about, well, let me just reiterate some of the things that, revisit some of the things that have already been asked to make sure I understand. The distribution of the very low-income units, maybe this is more of a question for staff. Is there a, is it a requirement for them to be distributed, or is that just the practice, and then distribution by sort of location and then type as well?
Yeah, so the current case law requires that they be distributed throughout the project, and that the finishes can't be substantially different than the other units.
And then what about the types, the two-bedroom versus three-bedroom versus four?
It would have to be distributed throughout all the unit types, yes.
Great. Okay. How do we deal with the, I recall being at the site way back when we were talking with EF, and it's pretty noisy on the edge of the 405. What, how would you deal with the noise? I wouldn't want to open my window at that edge of the property and, you know, just hear that noise going by. So, what's the plan for that? For either, whoever wants to answer.
You're asking me or staff?
Whoever wants to answer.
Okay. I'm happy to answer. We've done some kind of, we need to do a full noise study as we move forward with the project. We did some kind of preliminary noise analysis during our feasibility period, and there will be a new sound wall added. Right now, there is no sound wall. It's just chain-link fence along the freeway. So, that will help. And then in addition to that, there's likely going to be some increased STC ratings for the units that are immediately adjacent to the freeway. And you'll notice in the site plan, we also, we also use that kind of edge for parking intentionally to help kind of provide an additional setback.
Got it. So, you're, you're planning to build a wall?
Yes.
Northern edge?
Yes, that's correct.
I missed that. And then STC, is that just like-
I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's basically a noise rating.
Okay, for the-
For the windows and the wall assemblies and things, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Do you know what that acronym is?
That's fine.
Okay.
And then on the Olympia Street connection, there was some discussion about providing pedestrian access, but it sounded like it was timed. Can you just describe sort of the thought process or philosophy on that?
Sure. I think it's, it's really going to be up to the neighbors, how they, they want that. We, in our opinion, we were trying to kind of limit the access. I don't think they want additional people flowing into their neighborhood, even though they might want better access to the park for themselves. So, the idea was that it wouldn't be open except for when the park hours are open, and that would-
Shippensburg Park?
Yes. So, that way they're not having, you know, random people coming through their neighborhood at night through that access gate. That was, that was the idea behind that.
Okay. Sidewalks? I noticed there's no sidewalks in front of the-
Single-family or the detached homes?
Detached homes. Yeah. What's the story behind that?
So, the, there's a, there's an ADA issue with providing the sidewalks in that location at the moment, the way it's currently designed, based on us having to install the transformers for dry utilities. However, we can look into that if that's something that's, you know, a concern. We can look into seeing if there's a way to redesign that to include sidewalks in front of those homes.
Can you explain, how does ADA prevent you from adding sidewalks?
You have to have certain clearances around, around the, you have to have certain clearances around the transformer itself, and then, and then the sidewalks have to be a certain width to meet ADA standards. So, we're a little bit shy of meeting the ADA width there, which is why when you put in a sidewalk, you kind of open yourself up to the liability if it's not ADA compliant. So, therefore, we decided not to do the sidewalk, but that's certainly something, if that's a concern, we can figure that out. We'll go back and take a look at our design. I'm seeing nodding heads, so yes, we'll go back and try to make that happen.
I'm withholding my comments. Okay.
[laughing]
Yeah, vigorously nodding. Yeah, okay. It's puzzling to see how-
Sure.
-not having sidewalks helps with ADA, but okay.
It's meeting the, it's meeting the standard, not the-
That's the question in my head right now.
Right. I get why you're, where you're coming from.
Okay. And then, I'm curious, in your projects.
Sure.
This is a residential project, but do you ever do mixed residential and commercial?
We do not, no.
Never, not at all?
Not in the same building. We've done projects where there's commercial on one part of the site and residential on the other side of the, so horizontal mixed use, but we don't do vertical mixed use. It's, it's challenging for a home builder to do that just because you usually see that more in an apartment situation where there's leasing.
Sure. Yeah, I'm interested in your horizontal mixed-use experience.
Yeah, so we've done it on occasion here and there. It hasn't always been the most successful. Usually, it's a live-work situation, which really depends on where you're at, but in general, I'd say 90% of live-work projects end up being empty on the ground floor, so it doesn't really, doesn't really work all that well. In the case of this particular site, I think it's especially challenging because even though we do have frontage on Bear Street, it's a big hill, so you don't have a lot of visibility. So, it doesn't really make sense for a retail or something that requires a lot of visibility. And then from just an office standpoint, it is a little bit restricted from, from an access point standpoint.
Yeah.
So, that's why. It doesn't really make sense on this particular piece of property.
Yeah, okay.
Which is why we are proposing the GPA to kind of remove that requirement and allow for the residential to go forward.
Right, right. And then lastly, on the open space, the, actually on the slide that we're showing right now, if we're showing it, I don't know, on slide 10- right now, if we're showing it, I don't know, on slide 10, the, on the west side of the property, there's some green space that looks like it's, is that flat lawn in front of those homes?
Yes, so part of that will be active. Part of it will be activated. We're putting some, we're just making it kind of more of a turf area for dogs and put some dog stations out there, speaking of things that came up earlier.
Yeah.
And, you know, place where you can, you know, play cornhole or throw a ball, kick a ball, whatever. Most of that, and then, you can kind of see there's like a diagonal line, that's actually the edge of the property. Right now, the other part is, yeah, so, so there is another parcel there and that we have maintenance agreements on, and then, there's like a, at the bottom of the hill there, you can kind of see where the green, where the coloring starts and ends, that'll be the bottom of the slope, and that's actually a big slope, so we're proposing to keep all of those trees there. That's, that's why we've kept it more of a passive area to preserve those trees.
Okay, and you mentioned, kind of my follow-on to that is about dogs, I was sort of curious, I can't remember exactly where it was, but you know how sometimes when you're in a, in a park or grassy area and you can like tell where the dogs always go? And I wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want that to be in front of my house, right?
Sure.
So is that, I was surprised to see like not a separate area that's like sort of designated as the dog area. Can you just describe the thought on that? Is this just big enough that you wouldn't expect that to happen?
Yeah, we haven't really gotten into that level of detail with the plans just yet, but we can certainly, well, we obviously don't want the same issue that was discussed here earlier tonight happening, so as part of, you know, the HOA, they'll be enforcing some of the rules there, and we'd be limiting where dogs can do their business to a certain portion of that area.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for wanting to build homes in Costa Mesa.
Yes.
Couple of questions, I kind of want to drill down on the price, just because I'm a young person, I don't own a home. What do you anticipate selling the flats for?
Right now, we're priced in the mid-eights, starting in the mid-eights, which is consistent with comparable, you know, existing housing stock in the area, so that, that's what we base our pricing on, our comps in the area of similar-sized and style of home.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Have you guys built these type of flats before? Where you have like different levels in the same kind of like vertical structure?
Not, not this exact one, but something similar, yes.
Okay. How did, how is that community doing for that similar type of structure?
That one has sold out a long time ago, so I don't exactly know the answer, but.
Okay, but overall, they sold, it wasn't an issue?
Oh, yeah, yes, they sold.
Um, do you have any data on how long people stay in those first-time homes, or no?
I don't. After, after we sell them.
You're good to go, yeah.
We, we stay for a little while to make sure everything's operating, the HOA, and making sure that, you know, there's no issues, but, yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't say, sorry, I don't have that data.
No worries. Um, you know, I'm just, well, one, part of me is excited, because, I mean, I've been advocating for flats and just different types of ownership, and it's fun to like see a project kind of incorporate that. I do have questions, just because we're not usually accustomed to it.
Sure, sure.
And again, I appreciate you drilling down on the actual price point.
Yeah.
I guess for me, just a statement I'll say, I know Mayor's not a time to say statements, but is, as a young person that doesn't own a home, I'll buy anything that's, has a front door and a roof.
Right.
And I think.
Unfortunately, that's where we are in the market, but yeah.
Yeah, so.
Hopefully, we offer more than that.
I, I just, I hope you're open to feedback, because.
We are, absolutely.
Unfortunately, and I'll be honest, like that literally is what qualifies for apartment and for a home these days, so.
Yeah.
I don't want to have the bar just be like, oh, it sells.
Yeah, and to the open space point, I just wanted to kind of mention that we're actually meeting the minimum common open space. There's like, the way that the standard's written is it's an overall, and 50% of the requirement is common open space, at least 50%. So we are meeting that number. It's, it's the overall that we're not meeting, so you are still getting 50% of the required open space as common area, which is the standard, but then it's where the, the overall total doesn't come out to what the standard is for the city, and that's where we're asking for some flexibility. And mostly, that's just indicative of this type of housing where you've got, you know, balconies and decks.
Yeah.
Versus rear yards.
All right, let's open up to the public. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item?
Sir.
Good evening again, Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. While I'm happy that this is looking at housing, I'm very happy it's looking at for-sale housing. I think I have a number of concerns, which you've all kind of expressed some of those same concerns. One is the parking issue. While we like to say they'll all park their cars in their garages, we know how that really works out in the end analysis, and my concern there is, is if you have, if you have access, pedestrian access from the neighborhood to cross through that to go over to Schiffer Park, which is a great idea, except it makes it very easy for people to park their cars in the neighborhood and then walk right back in to their area, thereby burdening the neighborhoods right next to it, and that's a concern of mine. Traffic? You're going to put 5,000 units, or you're not, San Ante is, going to put 5,000 units just north of that on Bear, just off of Bear, and that traffic is going to push down Bear, and I can just imagine what Bear Street traffic is going to be like when these people are all coming out to go to work and all the other folks coming down Bear to get to the freeway is going to be like in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening, it peaks. We have all those studies saying, well, it's not going to be that bad, well, we've seen those kind of things too. And my concern here, of course, is that if San Ante is going to, in fact, build all those units, which they seem to be moving forward with, is Costa Mesa getting any compensation for the impacts on Costa Mesa at Bristol and at Bear? I don't think so. Benning Ranch, when they were going to build it, didn't they finally wind up by saying they'd pay Costa Mesa something when we made it stink? I think we need to talk to them about that, because we're going to have problems in that area. Secondarily, these are young families, they usually like to have people come by. I see some real problems with people, I guess you're going to let everybody come to your house through your garage, because otherwise, they have to walk a fairly long distance from parking to the front of the house, which is going to create a fair amount of foot traffic in that area with no potential cut-throughs that are going to help that. And I'm very concerned about the fact that these affordable housing units, were they going to be put? Oh, against the freeway, probably, to buffer the non-deed-restricted housing from the noise of the freeway. So I would really ask that you make sure that the deed-restricted are dispersed evenly throughout the project if we come forward with a project down the road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. I don't see anybody else that wishes to speak in the chambers. How about on Zoom?
Yes, phone number ending in 613, please.
613, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, good evening. Here we have another identity project brought forward by John Stevens and Mayor Protem Harland. This to all the surrounding neighbors. Notice that their questioning never was focused on concerns really to impacts to your quality of life. And you can hold them to this. This is an election year. John Stevens and Mayor Protem Harland, tell your friends who reside in Costa Mesa. They don't deserve to be re-elected. They are selling our city down the road. Now, Chavez, you're curious about the price, do you understand the payment? I don't think so. Mid-850, what is that? A hundred and seventy thousand down? You're looking at $5,000 a month payment plus HOA, which means we need to gross 15,000 a month. Now, most people can't put that down, so if we put down 50 grand, you're looking at $6,000 a month, so you need to gross 18,000 a month to qualify for this. This project is way too dense, terribly underparked. Remember, they are selling you, they're selling you. They want to get as many units so they can make as much money as possible. They're asking for a reduction in open space. Uh, there's no parking. You know, you can't have friends over. The residences that are adjacent to this project are going to bear the impact, and I'm pleading to the residents that live near this project, remember in November, make them pay on election day. Kick John Stevens out, tell your friends who reside, like, kick out Harland, because they are selling our city down, down the road. All right, and for Gramos, tell everyone in that district right away, because they are going to ruin our city with high-density development. This is another terrible project brought forward by a terrible council worse than Rick Harland. This, again, is business. It's business at the quality of life of the existing residents. This council doesn't care about our quality of life. And just, you know, maybe those neighbors who have lived next to this project, you guys can sign up for a permit parking program that's not in force either. You know, pay for a service that you don't get, because again, you know, this council does not care about your quality of life. Remember in November, make them pay on election day.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alex, please.
Alex, you have the floor.
Alex, please unmute yourself.
Hello? Hi there.
Yes, hi.
My name is Angelia Andrade Valarta, Costa Mesa resident and at District 5, and I just wanted to applaud and do a huge appreciation for the applicant for considering this project. This is exactly what the future of Costa Mesa needs. It's really great to see how we're looking at opportunities for a mixed use and diversifying opportunities for all levels of income in our community. You know, the concerns about the park, I was just trying to quickly look up what is that, that ratio that you were all concerned about, but whatever it is, it's going to be greater and in much better condition than currently the west side of Costa Mesa has, I am certain. Schiffer Park has such a huge, underused green space, so whatever investment we can to make it at greater, more accessible to more people, I think would be a plus, so I appreciate that the applicant is taking that into consideration ahead of time. Again, similar echoing Councilmember Chavez's comments about first-time home buyers, you're right, I will be happy to walk up a treehouse if it's an opportunity to own property someday that I can create wealth for myself and my family in the future. The concerns about, you know, I know parking is a huge one concern, and it's also great to hear the perspective that other cities are kind of adapting to that, and ours are much greater than, than many others, but we, we got to realize we're, we're a city, right? And we continue to grow, and we got to accommodate for the, the future of Costa Mesa so that more of our professionals stay here and not move out of the city, because they cannot afford to live here, even though they grew up here, went to school here, invest here, and, and work here. There is great parking ordinances that are happening in other areas of the city that is definitely something that we could consider to help alleviate that concern. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak on this and look forward to having this move along so that more folks can move into Costa Mesa on a long-term basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers, Ms. Chavez.
Okay, closed public comment. All right, so now's the time for us to give our feedback to the applicant. Of course, if you have other questions, that's fine, too. Who wants to go first? Were you, do you, did you want to keep talking? I mean, I cut you off, Councilmember, you know, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, sure.
No.
No, I, two, two more comments and more suggestions. So I'm glad we've got this site plan designed. So the streetscape on the far right is a far more pleasing and, I think, engaging effort to improve the public realm. You've got single-family residential on one side, all fronting other front doorways, and you see the, the line of, of trees there as well. I think that can be replicated in that center, center block, if, and maybe this is hard to explain, but maybe if that center block there was reoriented so that the front doors are facing the residential to the south, and then kind of inverted so that the parking alley just goes left to right, if that makes any sense. I'm happy to draw it for someone, but I think that would actually probably provide a little bit more engagement, too, for somebody who's coming into the development and looking not at a, you know, the, the back of the homes, but, you know, actually seeing a, a front facade. Yeah, that's all I can suggest right now.
All right, any other comments? Councilmember Reynolds, yes?
Yeah, thanks. So, big picture, I'm just going to say it for the record, there are so many other ways, where'd she go? Oh, there she is, okay. You know, there's obviously a lot of discussion about housing in Costa Mesa and how we build missing-middle housing, and how do we evolve to be a more walkable community, how do we use space more efficiently, and so on, and there's, I've just seen so many images and so many memories of when I lived in Cambridge, Massachusetts, of like what I think we could be, and I wish we could do something different with the site. I appreciate that you're sort of bound to what our existing codes are now, and we're maybe a year, year and a half, two years away from really updating our codes to create something that I would think of as, as better. So just sort of registering that, I'd love to hear, based on your company's experience, another time, like what could be, right, if codes were a little bit different, to create a, a structure that wasn't so bound by parking and providing space for cars. So that aside, the other part of our general, or the part of our general plan that I, I do worry about here is the balanced mix of uses, and maybe if we can go to slide eight, I think it was slide eight. Yes, excellent slide. I think this is really helpful. I know, I, I hope we can do this for any, every project that comes before us. Really helpful to see, right, if you're a resident coming into a neighborhood or moving into a place, like, you know, how far do I have to walk to a park? Obviously, the park proximity here is excellent, you know, my nearest, but my nearest coffee shop, my nearest school, my nearest grocery store, you know, less than a mile walk sounds great, but these are very, very, very difficult walks, so I think it's helpful for us to look at proximity, but like the reality of that walk to Pollerino, I, I used to do community bike rides monthly, and this was actually the one area where we decided not to go. We decided it was too dangerous to take a group biking across that, along that yellow line across, what is it, the 73 there? So I think the, the proximity to a lot of uses is really valuable here, but we, it's just very hard to access them outside of a car, and all of this to, to kind of get to my earlier question about, like, wouldn't it be nice to be able to have some of those uses closer or more walkable to where the actual homes are? This site is surrounded by neighborhoods that also, basically, people have to get in cars to get anywhere. Anyway, all of this ramble is like, I thought it would be really, really nice to have some kind of like pop-up coffee shop there, so if that's something in your wheelhouse or you would like to consider, I think that could be a really nice neighborhood gathering place. I do want us, as a city, as we're moving forward on projects, to really look at how are we locating residential with the kind of everyday places residents want to get to, and make sure that residents can get to those places without having to get into a car. Otherwise, we continue to end up in this loop of having to provide places for people to park, having to provide places for people to drive, and it just takes up so much space that we know we, we want to use on better things like parks. Anyways, so, aside from that, some of the specific comments, I, I'm not a planner, but I, it seems like a decent project in terms of how you've been able to use the space. I do appreciate the focus on trying to create a lower-cost housing ownership opportunity by creating the flats. I mentioned I lived in Cambridge, I'm very familiar with this kind of structure, I've spent lots of time in this kind of structure, I think it works just fine for certain families, it's not for everybody, but I, I think it works just fine. The visuals actually on, I don't know what deck here, but the, kind of the visual of the, the three-story and the four-story pop-up. I think looks pretty nice, at least the window and balcony side. Um, it did bring back memories of certain streets that I walked down that were really pleasant streets. So I had a note that I really liked the mix of balconies. I think it really livens up the space in an evening when the lights are on and people are kind of coming in and out. I think it's actually a really pleasant, appealing design. So I appreciate that. The backside, the car side, you know, that's always going to be kind of the boring, undesirable part of the neighborhood in my mind. I agree with Councilmember Harland's earlier comments about that one, like the darker detached design looked really plain and boring. I'm sure we can fix that up. On the open space, I know it's hard to fit it all in, but having, especially if we expect there to be children here, but also for adults, just really having outdoor space to use. I appreciate how you've sort of tried to build in the center park space. Um, I think one thought that would make me more comfortable in terms of trying to provide more open livable space outside the homes is really trying to design the streets that we have to have, the streets within the property, designing them for play. So, and there's some guidelines around that that I know staff can look into or transportation team probably know well. Um, you know, narrower streets, having the chicanes, things that really make sure when people are driving down those streets, they're driving slowly so that the streets are places where, like you could imagine a few kids throwing a football or kicking a soccer ball actually in the streets. I think if we design the streets for play, we're sort of effectively adding more common open space that can, you know, create opportunities for neighbors to be outside and to meet each other. So that's something that I would be looking for is both the safety aspect of really designing so that people won't speed in these neighborhoods. It's something we hear all the time from neighbors now, cars drive too fast down my street. So designing to prevent from speeding, but also really designing to encourage using the streets as a public space for neighbors. On the, on the plans in front of us, the tree coverage looked a little bit bare. I know we have some standards on that, but I, you know, given heat waves that are becoming more and more and more frequent, I'd be looking for really good tree coverage. I don't think we've set some new standards now, but I know a rule of thumb that a lot of cities are leaning towards is really aiming for 30% tree coverage for shade in neighborhoods. So I'd be looking for that. And then on the off-site improvements, I really like the pedestrian access through Olympic. Um, I think it's really important to, you know, certainly have those discussions, but providing that access for neighbors to the right to get through to Schiffer Park really creates a safe way to Schiffer Park. But it also creates a much safer way for residents in this new neighborhood to get over to the Bristol Street corridor. So I think that's something that would really help the residents and improve walkability of the overall site. Um, improvements to Schiffer Park, uh, sounds good. I do agree that there's a lot of opportunities to better utilize some of the acreage at Schiffer Park. I can't move my own writing. Oh, um, we still have slide eight in front of us. So again, you know, if I agree the proximity is good to, you know, a coffee shop and a grocery store, I think the Vons in the upper corner, that's going to be gone in three years. But, um, you know, I think if we want to promote walkability, we've got to do work to really improve safe walking and biking on these routes. So that needs to be something that we look at. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I hope my comments did not harp on you the fact that I'm excited that we have ownership opportunities in Costa Mesa. On that note, real quickly, on like when you come back for planning commissioner council, perhaps you could have each, maybe it's one design where we see how a flat would look with the first story and then the story they're in, opposed to like all jumble up together? Sorry, like if you can like maybe separate each flat. I know they're all in one structure, but separate each individual flat so we can better understand, visualize it? Because these floor plans are harder to figure out what, like where one flat begins or ends. I do echo a lot of comments made by Councilmember Reynolds and Protem Harland. Um, one, to the extent we can make it more inviting and aesthetically pleasing as people come in. Um, I really appreciate how this prioritizes the density because I know density brings affordability. And as a trade-off, people don't really understand, you know, when the commenter's mentioned the real cost of owning a 800 grand home. It's very real cost, that's why a lot of folks are renting and don't own homes right now. It's, reality is reality for a reason. So I appreciate you guys going with the density bonus. I appreciate you guys trying to be as flexible as possible to create those entry-level opportunities. Um, I want to echo the point about the trees. Um, it's important that we have a shade, especially as, you know, each year is harder than the last. To the extent that we can have sidewalks, I would greatly appreciate it. Even simple loop does wonders for community engagement. Um, and I think it also creates an environment that's a bit more community-oriented than even doing a coffee shop. When you walk, see, when you're walking a dog, you're going to say hello. And yeah, I do, I'm welcome to hear how you guys are gonna do the buffer from the freeway noise. I know you have some ideas in place, but perhaps something, like a wall that's, you know, has artwork on it would be cool, I don't know, just ideas to throw out there. And yeah, I think, and I don't want to harp on that darker home style, but if you can change up a little bit, make it, I don't know, make it maybe a bit more traditional in the style, that would be awesome. But again, overall, I'm very pleased we're going to be building Costa Mesa and building ownership. So thank you guys for being here.
Councilmember Gamarros?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, there's a few things I'd like to go over. I just want to start off by thanking the developer who came to us with this idea. After speaking with the owner of the property, a lot of developers came and all they were offering were high-density apartments. And let me tell you, they were gonna stack them high and dry. They did not care about the impact on the community. They were going to try and get as many of them, many of them in there as they could. And after speaking with local residents in the area, a lot of them said, "Well, I want to see R1 housing in there." I said, "I do not see how a developer is going to come in here and put affordable R1 housing." Maritage came in, spoke with us, the mayor and I, and staff, and listened to what we had to say. I asked, "What is the likelihood that you could put some type of housing that would not impact the surrounding residents?" Because the surrounding residents, all of them, are in R1 housing. I think he did just a gallant effort at putting R1 housing around the perimeter of this area. One of the other things that we talked about was giving the neighborhood that has never had access to Schiffer Park, access to Schiffer Park. I did not think that we would be able to provide access to them on Olympic, yet we are. They're going to have an illuminated pedestrian walkway. It's going to encompass the same park hours that are already there. And that entire neighborhood is going to have the ability to access Schiffer Park not by driving. So I think that's incredible. Thirdly, excuse me, secondarily, a lot of the constituents in the area have complained that they have a very difficult time making the left-hand turn coming out of their neighborhood, which is the lifestyles neighborhood, onto Bear Street to try and get to the 73 or the 405. They said, "We'd be happy to signalize this intersection for not only those residents, but there's a commercial property there which could have a coffee shop if it wanted, and the new residents that we had proposed to live there." So that's a great amenity that has never been there as well. And it's an eyesore, it's not an eyesore, it's a problem for the community that's trying to access the park or get to work in the morning. And the third thing is the improvement to Schiffer Park. We were kind of like thinking, what could we put in there? And one of the things that came up were pickleball courts. Schiffer Park, to my knowledge, is the only park that has a full basketball court, two racquetball courts, full restrooms. It has neighborhood and off-major street access. It's definitely a utilized park, but there's room for improvement. And this developer is willing to step out and provide that. Every step of the way, they've been greeting this community with nothing but open arms. So I just want to thank you for everything that you've done to provide a very welcoming neighborhood, the improvements. I love it, I love to hear what the other council members have asked for, and I think they're great ideas. And I just want to thank everyone who's listened and who's working to improve our community. I just want to say, give a big thanks because when Measure K was put forth, I didn't have a property, I had nothing. I had to fight for it on the dais and say, "This is the only spot I have, let's add this." And when we got it, I worked just about every chance I had with the owner to try and figure out a solution. And I'm happy to say that we're working on one. So thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody want to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Harper?
I'm not going to do a sales pitch for you, but that was good. Yeah, I just want to give some perspective. In 2015, I, with another partner, I, we got a project approved in the city of Covina. And it was on nine acres. And initially, we went, we were trying for 119 units. Um, we ended up, and this is six acres, so it's less. Um, we ended up with 62 standalone units, Pocket Park. And it was in an R1 neighborhood. So that's kind of my perception. Economically, it worked out, wasn't our favorite. But that's what we ended up with after we got feedback from the neighbor. We looked at what the neighbors needed and what the community wanted. So, so that's, you know, we're looking at 146 on six acres. To me, and I always, I always try and represent the people. I was trying to be the voice of the people I represent, which is more of an R1 neighborhood. You know, and I know there's modifications and things are getting smaller. Uh, but I'm always trying to keep the character of Costa Mesa. So my feedback is, I'm thrilled with homeownership. And that's the one thing I do side with several of the members up here. At least one, there's more than one, Lauren. Less density, I'm concerned about the traffic. And I know you'll do a study and we'll come up with something. Mr. Humphrey's brought up another project nearby. I came here 25 years ago, used to drive down Harbor Boulevard, it was great. It's not so great anymore. So we're adding, we're adding housing and it makes a difference. And, um, like Covina, we're a mature neighborhood. And Covina was a mature neighborhood. And that was kind of the feedback we got was, yeah, this is great, but you got to scale it down. It took a lot to get everybody happy. Um, I'd love more open space. I'm not as familiar with these others with this, the park. I mean, we ended up with a park at Pocket Park. So more parks, pocket space or park space is good. Um, I'm looking forward to neighborhood input, which I'm sure you're on top of. And I'm looking forward to what that feedback is, honestly. And, um, and I just want to meet the character of what's in Costa Mesa. And I don't think, you know, I see some speakers come and speak, well, Costa Mesa's changing. Well, what's it changing to and how dense are we going to be? And is that the, is that the city we want to build? That one gentleman, I forget his name, he speaks all the time and he's asking the question, "Why are we building, why are we building?" We don't have an answer other than the state told us to build. We're trying to solve a problem, but, um, I still think we owe it to the residents here, their stakeholders, uh, to keep the character of our neighborhood. So that's my, that's my comments, thank you.
Thank you. We good? I have a few comments. You want to go, you want to say something?
Yeah, look, I agree with most of the things that have been said. I don't need to pile on and talk more than I need to. Um, I think sidewalks, bike lanes, walkability go a long way with this council in case you haven't figured that out yet. Um, and so I think I'm far less concerned with design. You could push limits on density as far as most of us are concerned up here as long as it is a walkable, bikeable, EDA-accessible place to live. Thank you.
So, um, you know, to, to just kind of follow up on what Councilmember Harper said, one of the reasons why we're building projects like this is the central reason why they, um, kind of what they led with, which is to create the middle, to address the missing middle. And I thought it was very perceptive to say that there are only eight units of ownership housing in Costa Mesa under $1 million that are available for sale. But then I'll take it one step further. I would venture to say that those eight ownership units under $1 million that are currently available for sale aren't nearly as nice as the ones that we're proposing here. They're certainly not as new, um, by definition. So I think that it does respond to the market, which is important. And, you know, like I've said many times, and I'll just say it again in reference to this, I'm a 61-year-old old guy, but I've got kids that are in their 20s and 30s and none of them can afford to live in Costa Mesa, right? And they want to. I mean, I think that kids and the next generation really wants to be in Costa Mesa. You know, I was a little bit disappointed that when asked, you know, "Why would anybody want to live here?", you didn't say, "'Cause it's in Costa Mesa", right? I mean, I know that's kind of implicit, but it is in Costa Mesa and the sad part about it is the next generation just simply can't afford it. You know, unless they're massively helped by their parents or they move from, I don't know, what can you do? I don't know, even know. I mean, I bought my house at 27, that's just not doable anymore. But some, maybe not 27-year-olds, but some young people who are capable of walking upstairs are going to, uh, are going to buy these places, right? And so that's good. And then the other thing is, you know, you look at, everything is, is, um, it's interesting when you look at these things, you say, "Okay, what's there now?" You know, well, who can really advocate for what's there now? I mean, the owner doesn't want it to be like that. We want to improve and add value to that site, six acres right along the 405 freeway. You know, the televangelists are long gone and now we need to do something more useful with that piece of property. And as, Councilmember Marros made a lot of the good points, but to connect Fisher Park, which is, sorry, Schiffer Park, which is a great amenity with the Olympic Avenue neighborhood there is, is an excellent benefit. And then to improve that park, which is already a very good park, but to improve it however you could, that would be good. Is it, you know, is it perfect? I don't know, probably not perfect. But that's what we'll work on, we'll work on that and we'll collaborate together on that. I do think we should consider a development agreement if nothing else. Maybe the terms of it, maybe the content of what you do will not change, but what it allows us to do is become really more engaged in the community benefit aspect of it, in some of the details, a little bit more than we normally would. And so if you're open to that, I think that's something to consider. I'm not sure if any of the council members agree, but I think that's something to consider. But really, I appreciate you coming to Costa Mesa. I appreciate your investment in Costa Mesa. I appreciate you meeting a need in the market of the missing middle to provide ownership housing, to provide access to parks. The other thing I was thinking about is, and I don't even know how you would execute this, but we may be able to work with OCTA or something like that or some of the different vendors is to create, now you've got an area and you've got 146 additional families. Maybe there's some type of a trolley or some type of thing that we could get going with not just the people at this development, the Maritage development, but the lifestyle and even the Olympic Park, um, residents. Because it is, it can be a little bit intimidating to go over that bridge and into those amenities. It'd be nicer to have a trolley. So something to think about, let's be creative, let's be innovative. And I think that this is a really good, has a lot of potential to serve a lot of people in the community. And with that, we don't need to vote on anything. So unless anybody has anything to say, let's move on to the next item. Thank you.
New business, item two, is City Council First Reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council, the City of Costa Mesa, California, amending Title II, Chapter II, Section 2-21 of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, Increasing Salaries of City Council Members." Presentation by Ms. Lee, Human Rights Council Members. Presentation by Ms. Lee, Human Resources Manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, we bring forth an ordinance regarding city council compensation. Some background on this item. The City Council's current salary rate of $904.40 per month was last updated by ordinance number 09-5 15 years ago in May 2009. The City Council had cut its salary by 5% in 2009 due to the Great Recession and has remained the same ever since. There's been no salary adjustment for the City Council since December 2010. In fact, the last increase to City Council compensation, the last increase was in 2004. The previous rate was $952 per month that went into effect in 2006. As part of the City Council's goals to recruit and retain high-quality staff, one of the new objectives was to perform a market analysis of City Council compensation for comparable agencies and special districts within the county, county, and report the results to the city manager. Here, there's a table of the monthly salary and benefits provided to the City Council for our five contiguous agencies. You'll see that the average excluding Fountain Valley, which is a little bit of an outlier, is about $3,990 per month. Costa Mesa is $3,400 per month, which includes the base pay and health benefits. That takes it to about 15.5% below the average excluding City of Fountain Valley. California Government Code, Section 36516, allows for City Councils to enact an ordinance providing City Council members a salary based on population. This government code section was recently amended to increase the amount allowed for cities with over 75,000 up to and including 150,000 in population to up to $1,900 per month. Previously, the amount for this population bracket was $600, but the City Councils could increase their salaries beyond this amount by an amount up to 5% increase per year from the date of the last adjustment. Based on this original formula and the City Council pays since December of 2010, the law had allowed for an increase of approximately $45 per month, equivalent to $21 per payroll for each calendar year since 2010. This allows for the City Council's salary to be increased by $587.86 per month for a new salary rate of $1,492.26 per month. This amount is close to earning minimum wage at $16 per hour, working 22 hours per week or $1,525 per month. Realigning the City Council's salary to $1,492.26 per month would be more consistent with the cities of Huntington Beach and Newport Beach, which are also full-service with both police and fire and more similar instruction to Costa Mesa. You can see here in this table that City of Costa Mesa would be at 4,042 per month, where the average of the other two agencies is 4,047. And then also, for your reference, the monthly compensation provided to the Mesa Water District Board is about $5,720 with base pay and health Per California Government Code, Section 36156.5, City Council compensations can be made effective following the next general election or November 5, 2024. Recommendations, staff recommendations, increasing the compensation for the City Council does in compliance with the law, allows the salary to be in alignment with our local agencies. And we are recommending to introduce the first reading and ordinance to bring City Council compensation to current 2024 levels as permitted by the government code. And the increase would be effective after the general election with the new City Council in December of 2024. If approved, the second reading and adoption will be at the September 17, 2024 City Council meeting. The proposed increase would be effective in December 2024, after the next general election in November 2024. The prorated fiscal impact for fiscal year 2024-25 is $3,527.16 for six months per member. There are sufficient salary savings citywide to cover this increase. The staff is available to answer any questions on this item.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Oh, if there are no questions, I'll open it.
I'll go.
Okay.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Who brought this forward?
This agenda item? Who brought this forward?
Um, well, it was, the market analysis was part of the strategic plan when we previously met. So then, when we presented it, we came up with a recommendation.
Who brought it forward?
I am, on behalf of the City Council, so this was a specific, yeah, a specific request that was made at one of our strategic planning retreats to do the analysis and bring back a recommendation.
Oh, did count, someone from the council ask about it and request it be brought forward?
Yes, it was one of the objectives that was approved, and then the council approved.
One of the objectives is to, well, that's an overall objective to, for our salaries in our city to be market, right? So here's my, here's my question is, and this is very confusing for me. So in all the years I've worked, I've never had an employee bring forward the recommendation to increase my pay. So it's awkward, right? You see what I'm saying? And I, and I don't think that, and frankly, there's a whole bunch of things that we're probably going to, like, scratch my head about. Obviously, if City Council in Irvine or Huntington Beach get paid more, I'm probably not going to move there. It's not like an employee that's paid more from one city to the other, so you have a reason to move. So I don't know if it, I don't know if it meets the same criteria. So that's why, you understand what I'm saying? That's the, that's kind of a question. It's a, why? So that comparison seems odd that we would do. It's, the other thing in your calculation, and I'll pick on the math here, we, we include our own salaries in the average, and that actually brings them up. And the most comparable city by population is Newport Beach, which has 83,000. We have 109,000. And then, of course, Fountain Valley's the, the next most comparable, and they got 500. I'm not sure why. Do we know why they don't only pay $500 a month? What's their concept? What's the concept behind that?
I don't have that.
Don't I have an answer? I know, I sound like I'm picking on you. I'm not, I could pick on someone else. I'm just wondering what the, what the concept behind council pay is. And honestly, when I ran, I never even knew there was council pay. Is there a general concept of, is why we pay what we pay? And I'd like to ask why the sanitary district gets more than we do, and the water district gets more than we do. There's guys I'd like to pick on more than our fellow council members. Do we know? Is there any general concept the state of California has?
Yes.
Why you pay council members pay?
Well, yes. And I, while we are showing the comparison to our contiguous cities, for your information and just for reference purposes, the recommendation that we're making this evening is consistent with, with the California Government Code. So in the California Government Code, they have guidelines for cities and to reflect appropriate pay, let's call it, for elected officials. And so that's what we use to develop our recommendations this evening.
And I think you're spot on. I was really asking, I wonder what the intent is behind someone that came up with, why do I pay the sanitary district guys? Why do I pay council members? What's the concept behind public service? For those of us who represent the public, we don't work. We get elected. You all get, you all get hired based on your qualifications. I didn't get here by my qualifications. I got here with some flyers and a website. Those are my comments and questions. I got more comments, but I'll hold them off. So those are all my only questions. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. So, let's open it up for the public. People in the chambers. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes. Phone number ending in 613, please.
613, you've got the floor.
I feel like I'm getting ripped off because this council sucks. You have consistently made my life worse, and you want a pay raise. That's not how it works in the real world. I, I used to be a government employee, and I got all these wonderful raises. And I'll tell you the truth, I put in 14 to 15-hour days. It didn't matter. My coworkers have put in six, seven-hour days and got paid the same. You guys do not deserve a pay raise. Even though Thomas wants to buy a house, I don't think he should buy a house on our backs. I would actually hope that this, this, the council position becomes voluntary. And that would weed out those of you who use this for your benefit instead of for the benefit of the residents, which I think that probably a majority voting bloc would go away. Now, our friend earlier tonight mentioned that she was worried that they can't pay rent for those who can't afford it. And let us slap in the face to those who've become dependent on the government dole to pay rent because you have extended the inevitable by getting to a point where we can't afford it, yet you expect a pay raise. I earlier spoke tonight about paying for a service that was not provided because we didn't have the resources. And right now, we're watching you guys ask for a raise. I think Councilmember Harper asked a wonderful question. And I'm going to offer you this. Who asked for the raise? I want to know who asked. Because you don't deserve it. This council absolutely, absolutely has done, has absolutely done damage to the city. You don't deserve a raise. I wish that I could actually sue you for me having to pay for a service that I don't get. You know, I have to figure out how to make those where that circle. But you don't deserve anything. This council is the worst. Thomas, go look in Bakersfield. You can buy a house. Do us all a favor. Go there, dude.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Bakersfield's actually a really nice place. And my sister lives in Bakersfield. And I want somebody to clip this and send it to my sister, tell her that I was bragging about Bakersfield. Okay. Anybody else? You said nobody else on Zoom? All right, let's close public comment. So, does anybody have a motion they want to make pertaining to this?
On the board.
Oh, on the board. Yeah, it is on the board. Councilmember Gamaros, you've made your motion. What's your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go with the recommendation that the City Council introduce the first reading by title to increase the City Council compensation effective after the general election with the new City Council, December of 2024.
All right. What do you say, Councilmember Marr? Is that what you wanted?
Second.
A second? All right. Do you have any comments in support of your motion, Councilmember Gamaros?
No, I do not.
Oh, okay. What about you, Councilmember Marr?
Oh, I'm debating if I take the bait or not and respond to Councilmember Harper.
It's like, it's, it's like.
It's like right there.
It's like raising on a, raising on a check bet. So go.
Look, I, I think it's important. If we want a variety of voices up here, if we want a diversity of opinion, if we want people who come from different walks of life, if we want people that maybe can't afford to make $150,000 donations, then we've got to pay people for their time. That is equitable, that is fair. I pay people when I take their time. I don't invite people to come speak at organizations and not pay them for their time. I don't expect people to spend, to spend their Saturdays with me bending over backwards to help on some issue I'm working on without compensating them for their time. And that is the equitable thing to do in 2024. We're not, I don't think this is egregious. I think staff has been very thoughtful in trying to come up with a formula that makes sense, given that we haven't done this in almost 20 years. And so this is just to kind of keep us with the surrounding cities. This, we're not, we're not advocating to be Santa Ana and pay people full-time. I like my full-time job very much, and I plan to continue doing it. But I do think if we wanted different perspectives and different walks of life and different parts of Costa Mesa to be represented in keeping with the California Voting Rights Act, in keeping with the reason why we went to district elections and didn't just let folks from Mesa Verde continue to run the city, then we've got to do the fair thing. And that is to increase council compensation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to be heard?
Oh, I think I'll respond to that.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Harper, you may be heard.
I, I don't think people from Mesa Verde have ever run the city, but I think that's, that's a little, that's a little, I mean, Mayor Stevens would be one of them.
Historically, that is true.
I got the floor.
Historically, there's been very.
Hold on, hold on.
I didn't interrupt you.
That's true. In order.
Don't interrupt you.
He's true about the point of order. He does have the floor.
Thank you. You know, I, I, you know, I just believe public service should come from the heart, not the wallet. I think council members should be driven by a passion to serve our community, not financial gain. You know, public office is a call to volunteer, volunteerism without, you know, receiving a paycheck. It fosters, it's a tradition that fosters genuine dedication to the well-being of our community. I don't want a platform that develops career politicians. I don't want a platform that encourages people without life experience or without wisdom to serve on council. I don't think that best serves our community. I would hope that the people with a passion for this listen closely to everyone in our community. And that's my perspective. And, you know, I used to joke about when I ran, I didn't do this for the money. And, and you could never pay me enough to do this job. This is something you have to really commit to and believe in. And, and yeah, you have time for a full-time job. That's the way it's designed. If this is designed for a full-time job, and if this is a job, then our process for electing officials is grossly flawed, grossly flawed, because the skill sets aren't always aligned with who's voted for. So that's my position. And I don't mean to offend anyone by doing what I did in donating the compensation I received, or saying that, that, but, you know, I'll also say, when council members are pining on the two Costa Mases and how we should do more for the rest of Costa Mesa, it's hard for me to hear without doing something about it. And I don't like, well, let me say it this way. It's really easy for me to give away taxpayer money. It's a little harder for me to give away my money. But it's something that I, that I did on purpose, and I made a point of it. And, and I stand by it. So that's my comment. Thank you. Now you have the floor, Councilmember Marr.
Yeah, I'll just respond that, like, there's, that's, that's great that that's your view of public service. I don't think that applies universally.
Sorry, what's that?
That's your view of public service, right?
Of course it is.
I, I, I don't think that applies universally.
Excuse me. Now she has.
I'm trying to understand your.
I know. But she was, she was just, first of all, you're not on the mic. Second, don't interrupt her.
I understand. I didn't mean to. I just wanted.
You, but you did. So just don't talk. Let her talk.
I got you, John.
It's fine. We can go up for the question. But we can debate this later, Councilmember Harper, if you'd like.
All right. Does any other council member have anything to say? Okay. All right. This is actually a tough call for me. If, if I, I will tell you, if I vote for this, I'm still thinking about it at this moment. On the one hand, I, I don't need this extra money. I've never developed any property in Covina or anything like that, but I do really well in Mesa Verde, and I don't, I don't need this money. So if I vote for it, I'm leaning toward doing it, I'm not going to take the money. I'll probably donate it and get Harper's matching for my donation. I didn't ask him how long that would take if I, if I could continue to donate for years, and he'd match me up to $15,000. But I, I will definitely accept that. But it is a little ridiculous that the council hasn't been, compensation hasn't been increased in 20 years. And I know that there are people who are very able to serve on council, and we need them on council. And they, and we are better council and a better community because they serve. And this is meaningful money to them. It may not be meaningful money to me. It may not be meaningful money to Councilmember Harper. But it's meaningful money to them, and their participation, it means something to me on this council. So, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 5-2 with Mayor Pro Tim Harlan and Councilmember Harper voting no.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks. Thanks.